Another motion to move a couple other things around.
You just keep moving.
So, and, and I just wanna, before we have an audience, are we on TV?
Yes.
Especially when we get to the public input part, I really want it to be, I'm gonna try to manage the conversation better than I've managed it before, but I wanna really let the people speak and I wanna be able to manage all of us to not interrupt each other and to kinda take turns in speaking 'cause we're gonna, I, I think I've let things go a little out of control in terms of that, so, um, so, I, just be aware. I will call on you if there's time, but I, it really is meant to be the public's opportunity to speak and was us listening, and we'll have some deliberations more next week.
So, are we gonna make any decisions tonight? We're just gonna hear, we're just gonna discuss, no, no.
No. Correct. Yep. It's really for us to listen, more than anything, um, um, and obviously, you know, ask questions if people are saying things.
Okay.
So, um, next week, the bulk of our agenda will be making some decisions and some actual concrete next step actions, um, which I drafted on the timetable that we looked at last week, but I'll send it out after tonight. Okay, so, uh, no public comment, um, so, let's go right into the license renewals.
Uh, I move to approve the renewal of the following all alcohol on premises licenses. Celtic Bistro Corporation doing business as Be a Bistro, The Corner Stop Eatery doing business as The Corner Stop, V N A A Incorporated doing business Al Pacina, White Crane Incorporated doing business Fung Shui Restaurant, Cohasse Pub Corporation doing business Mr. Julie's Old Village Pub, R B L B Incorporated doing business Ladies Hideaway and Nugent's Kitchen One LLC doing business Nugent's Kitchen.
Can I hold before we give a second? Is that Tracy, I believe that's, is that from our packet or was that in front of you today?
From me today.
Okay.
Oh.
I heard extra one there.
What do you have?
I thought I heard it.
Oh, sorry, that's from your floor, you're right.
Right, I'm sorry, do you mind re- re- withdrawing the motion?
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, alright.
Alright. I said the one in the packet has been updated, so the one on the table today.
No.
Oh, it doesn't.
Right, 'cause there were a few extra ones in the packet that you just read.
It's been taken out, there's a few added.
Yep.
But, uh, okay, it's, it's, just pointing for clarification.
Yeah.
What's, what's up with, uh, um,
Cohasse Pub.
What's happened with Cohasset Pub Corp?
I mean, Mr. Julie's. Is that Mr. Julie's?
Yeah, so it'll be next week.
Yes.
Okay.
Eighteenth.
So they, we just approved the manager through December thirtieth.
Okay.
But they haven't done their renewal subject because they wanted us to do that first, is that?
So. We just today got the background check for them.
Okay.
So, she moved it to next.
Okay.
Okay, we'll also presumably be doing some of the liquor licenses for probably two weeks plus the next year at our next meeting for Red Lion and Cohasset Harbor Inn.
The, the plan is to have them on the eighteenth, all of them.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
Alright, so, circle back right to.
Let me try, I'll try a second, uh, motion.
Right, and, and just to clarify for those of us, those who are watching at home, these are for, they're two thousand nineteen calendar year licenses. Go.
Uh, I move we approve the renewal of the following all alcohol on premises licenses for two thousand nineteen. Celtic Bistro Corporation doing business Be a Bistro, The Corner Stop Eatery doing business The Corner Stop, V N A A Incorporated doing business Al Pacina, White Crane Incorporated doing business Fung Shui Restaurant, R B L B Incorporated doing business Ladies Hideaway and Nugent's Kitchen One LLC doing business Nugent's Kitchen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I approve. Um, next up, you wanna take 'em?
Uh, sure, uh, I'd like to, uh, make the motion to approve the renewal of the following wine and malt on premise license for two thousand nineteen calendar year. Cohasset Pizza Company Incorporated doing business Victoria's Simply Smith's Catering and Event, doing business Simply Smith's at One Pleasant, South Shore Playhouse Associates, 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 doing business as South Shore Music Circus in five South Main Incorporated doing business five South Main.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, and.
I make a motion to approve the renewal of the following club, all alcohol on premise licenses for the two thousand nineteen calendar year. George H. Mealy Post one one eight, The American Legion, Cohasset Golf Club.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Sure, give one to the golf club.
Hmm?
This thing's sarcastic. Alright, moving right along.
Uh, I make a, a motion to approve the renewal of the following retail package, all alcohol licenses, two thousand nineteen calendar year. Taste of Wine Incorporated doing business Taste of Wine, Curtis Liquor Stores Incorporated doing business as Curtis Liquors.
Okay, is there a second?
Kevin.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I make a motion to approve the renewal of the following retail package, wine and malt licenses, two thousand nineteen calendar year. Ladies Fish Market, Barrel and Vine LLC doing business as Barrel and Wine.
Is there a second?
Second, sorry, sorry.
It's gotta suck, that's okay, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the renewal of the following Climb and Victory Loser license for two thousand nineteen calendar year.
I roll.
Celtic Bistro Corporation doing business Be a Bistro, The Corner Stop Eatery doing business as The Corner Stop, V N A A Incorporated doing business Al Pacina, White Crane Incorporated doing business Fung Shui Restaurant, Cohasset Pizza Company Incorporated doing business Victoria's three A Pizza Grill doing business three A Pizza Grill, South Shore Playhouse and Associates doing business South Shore Music Circus, George H. Mealy Post one one eight, The American Legion, Cohasset Golf Club, Cohasset Pizza House, five South Main Atlantic Bagel, Cohasset Donuts, Starbucks Peel Pizza, Simply Smith's Catering and Event doing business Simply Smith's at One Pleasant, Nugent's Kitchen One LLC doing business Nugent's Kitchen, R B L B Incorporated doing business Ladies Hideaway.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And just, just because I asked somebody the other day, it's when's? When's is N G U Y E N is pronounced when's.
When's?
So it's when's kitchen?
When's.
When's?
Anyway.
Is it open?
Twentieth, I think, yeah.
I, I think tomorrow.
Uh, Tuesday.
The twelfth.
The twelfth, yep.
Twelve, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, Wednesday.
I think Lenny's is opening very shortly as well.
Good, right, people are hungry in this town, so.
They're having, yeah, yeah.
Uh, make a motion to approve the renewal of the following local entertainment licenses. Entertainment license licenses?
Okay.
I guess I was trying by there. Um, for two thousand nineteen calendar year, South Shore Playhouse Association doing business South Shore Music Circus, George H. Mealy Post one one eight, The American Legion, Cohasset Golf Club, R B L B Incorporated doing business as Ladies Hideaway, The Corner Stop Eatery doing business as The Corner Stop.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, let me ask you a question on that, um, the entertainment license. We gave a license to Be a Bistro through the end of December.
Correct.
Do we anticipate that they're gonna be reapplying for entertainment license?
They have not yet.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, making a motion to approve the renewal of the following class one and class two car sales, new and used vehicles license for the two thousand nineteen calendar year. W N Motors Incorporated doing business Coastal Nissan, four, uh, seven forty-two Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Cohasset Importers five oh eight Chief Justice Cushing Highway.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
A question here too, so there's another, my, I believe there's a couple other used car lots in town, including the one at the corner of three A and Pond Street?
So they're like a low, that's, that's class two, it's used cars.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Those other two have used and new.
And new.
And these are just used, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, make a motion to approve the renewal of the following class two car sales, used vehicles license.
I'm just trying to stop.
Follow along. Two thousand nineteen calendar year. C B K Auto, Jeffrey Pinkus, five forty-seven Beechwood Street, Aristocrat Auto and Truck Sales, Joseph Rosano, one oh five Ripley Road, John's Car Care, John Cubic Owner, and El Hodge Auto Group LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second, um, question, point of, sorry, Aristocrat Auto and Truck Sales, one oh five Ripley, where is that?
Yep. I was just gonna ask about the other locations on John's Car Care and El Hodge.
Just wanna cross some San Anthony's, is it?
Yeah, no, John's Car Care is, is at three A and Pond Street.
Okay, that's what I thought, and then what about El Hodge?
That's up on Chief Justice.
That's the, that's the garage. It's not the guys down the hall? El Hodge?
No, it's, it's on, it's along Chief Justice, like, it was, it used to be a different name, it's changed like three or four times.
It's.
On next to the, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, where's Aristocrat?
One oh five Ripley Road?
Yeah, well, I mean, one oh five Ripley Road is, I mean, it's not a very long street.
The art center is one nineteen.
Yeah, I, I, if.
It's, it's their home address, just like the five forty-seven, so it's a pocket license so they can go to auctions and sell it, but the license say you can't display them and you can't sell them.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. Alright. They can't sell from their house.
This is, it's why I'm asking the question, and, and then, uh, last but not least, is C B K on five forty-seven Beechwood also a pocket license?
Yep. Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay.
So that, that leads to a question I had that I think Jen answered for me earlier, which is that each of these individual licenses have different parameters
Yeah.
unique to that person, so when, we can kinda look at that and we.
I can imagine. When you, yeah, when you're signing them, you'll see, these are the current ones, yeah, you can start with those if you want. It has a description, yeah, so the two that have residential are just, they're only allowed to go to auctions to purchase them, they're not allowed to keep them on their lot
And the license?
or, you know, anything unregistered or anything like that.
Right.
And the license indicates then?
Yes.
And, and that, um, we didn't vote this, right? We just had a vote in a second, okay, do, uh, is, um, all those in favor?
No.
No.
We didn't vote in a second, okay.
Aye.
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 Um, the other question I had was just with Hodge Motors, whether they're, whether that's just, do they have any license to sell cars?
No, they do not.
It, it just seems to me like it's overflowing with cars.
Cars. I, I, I've noticed the same thing.
Um, so, I don't know whether there's anything that we can.
Is Hodge Ricky? Um, no. As I understand it, they're relocating up the street by San Anthony's and taking that facility.
Okay.
I, I don't know if their leases run out yet, um, at, um, gas station.
The gas.
I know the gas is not being sold for selling, they haven't, they don't seem to have relocated that up.
Be ready for signatures.
Yes, they, uh, yeah, you voted those, yes.
Okay.
But I could have buy, I.
Um, Bob has been over there, probably.
He's been over there?
This book I'm doing recently, I don't, I didn't get it up today, but I know, yeah.
You know, I, I would imagine just based on, it must be in our zoning laws, it's probably not, not, nothing for license purposes.
Something we've been watching.
If you have a garage where you're repairing cars, there must be some zoning regulations in terms of what, and how.
So I, 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 I will follow up again, but I, as, as Tracy confirms, our zoning officers live again.
Okay. So, um, this is gonna make the very boring TV for probably five minutes, but we need to sign all these licenses.
We need to sign licenses. We can have, we can have Casey do credit.
It's a good spot, we should be selling commercial breaks.
Yeah.
Yeah, there we go.
While we're signing.
We could zoom in on Casey, do a poll.
Revenue for the two, for two fifty?
It's a commercial, how's that?
I was gonna say do a review of the warrant, but we had the meeting.
We do a review of the warrant, we do like a five second review of the warrants. I think we did actually see the show. Uh, I, I, I mean, I was getting it, but I didn't see it, yeah, did it come out okay, I didn't see it, so.
I didn't either.
Did you?
Did anybody see it?
What's that?
The, the preview for special town meeting.
Nah, I'm riveting, absolutely.
You had a map, he actually had a map.
I look at a car crash in the middle.
Chasing, right? Chasing.
It was Casey.
Better than the French Connection.
We enacted a drive down.
Casey chased a piece of pizza.
Andrew Sirod.
Did you do all the licenses already?
We're doing them now, yeah, we're just taking this to, my good question.
Are you ready to dawn that those?
Somewhere next week.
An entertainment license for a beer?
That's not until next week.
Okay.
I just asked about it, actually, yeah.
I had agreement with Brian about the.
Parameters?
Yeah, I mean, not, nothing after ten o'clock.
I had a really good pen, it was stolen, right out of my hands.
I was a conscious part of the meeting here. You have tenants, don't you?
Yeah. But it's the rest of, the rest of the people that live there.
Do you wanna find out about the electronic yet? Tracy was actually a typewriter today, she was actually working a typewriter on, how do these, if you could print these, right?
An IBM Selectric?
We have one left.
I'm gonna rule you out.
I worked for a guy once that used to type on stickies, he used to take his little square stickies.
Captain Queef, Captain Queef was his name.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Yes.
I'm assembled.
Looks all kinds to make the world go around.
Yeah.
You know, one year, we did these one at a time, do you remember that?
Yes, I do, it was painful.
Yeah. That was painful.
Why do we do that?
Uh, 'cause.
I think Steve reorganized that, didn't you?
Yes. Steve did one.
That was a tradition and then Steve, when Steve became chair.
There was, there was no particular reason.
It was one of his organizations, I think, they were really good.
Anybody in Jack's speak up.
And then he introduced the two hour meeting too, don't forget that.
Yeah.
Lifesaver.
Lifesaver, we used to be in a little eleven, we used, you know that.
Well.
We had a few of those, unfortunately.
Yeah. My first year, some of them got over after midnight.
Midnight, yeah, we used to do two day meetings.
Who's the chair of all of them?
Yeah, that was just my dark days.
Oh, yeah, I mean, Kobe was staff and.
Brian was chair, there were several.
It was not, it was not the chair's fault as much as it was the circumstances of.
Yeah, it is.
I blame the chair.
The town.
The group dynamics. If you remember when Fred was the chair, it was one of the greatest moments around, we had, we were doing votes on the, on the town manager, and as you can imagine, that board was relatively split, um, and you were, your name was up and it was, and we were voting for the top three, and everybody would vote in rank order and then we, you know, we'd take the, take the compilation, and Fred's reading, he's reading off the votes and he gets to, you know, his favorite, and he's, and he's, he says, and, Chris Senior, uh, the vote is five hundred and forty-two to six.
He said that? I don't remember that.
Yeah. Uh, I said, you look, you didn't count mine?
That's great.
I wasn't here for any of those.
Oh, he was, he showed that there was, in a very tense moment, he had a great sense of humor.
That was the happiest. Yep.
I still see Freddy.
Those were happy days, yeah.
Yeah, soon as with the doctor.
We're gonna get overtime. Tracy, we have overtime.
We're not working overtime, we're actually gonna, we're ahead of time, we're gonna be let go early, except we have public comments at seven fifty-five.
I have, there's, I'm gonna file a claim, repetitive distress. I'm in good mood though.
My repetitive distress is that I'm here two nights in a row.
I have to say, last night was smooth, family.
Yeah, forty-five minutes, people.
Last night was.
And I lost the overall. Only thirty-two minutes of actually meeting. You gotta start at seven fifteen.
I won the overall.
He did.
He did, but you were still off by a long shot, yeah.
Five minutes. Oh, I was way off, I was way off, but that, you know, hey, a win's a win, ask Miami.
Tracy actually hit.
I said seven forty-five.
Did you?
Wow, did you really?
You won the pool.
You won the pool.
First I said eight forty-five, I mean, seven forty-five, and then Kevin had said quarter of seven, I'm like, a quarter of eight, and I said, yeah, it's gonna get on early. Good.
You nailed it.
Oh, sorry.
I figured it was gonna be forty-five minutes, and I thought we were gonna wait a lot longer for a quarter, but we didn't, so, thank you.
Five twenty-five was the number last night.
Oh, I saw that.
Good, I mean, for, oh, thin more.
And it was a heavily precinct one 'cause of the scenic roads.
Was it that brought in a lot of people, huh?
Um, it was like eighty to forty, something like that, in terms of the break, break between, something, something like.
So they probably brought in twenty-five people.
So our overall under on that was twenty-five.
Um.
Repetitive stress syndrome.
Is that it, you got them all signed?
We're done, okay, so, um, I think we'll just keep moving along in the order that the agenda is, um, and then we may have to take a, a recess before the public input time slot, um, so Chris, extension of operating hours for package store, do we have that information?
Yeah, it was just an email.
So this is from, um, Ryan Curtis, and this is, this is gonna be specific to his business or, or from?
I mean, he's asking, I, did, this, I think they are, they could stay open till eleven if they wanted to, that's the Mass State law.
Okay.
What place is this?
Curtis Liquors. They're looking at the Sunday before Christmas, it is.
So. Oh, this is a Wednesday thing?
Yeah, yeah, so he's asking to stay from six, instead of six P M closing, nine P M.
I think last year we did it as well, at nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do, do you remember whether we, um, we granted it just across the board for a time so that any place, any liquor store could stay open till nine? It just seems fair.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't believe you can be discriminatory.
So that nobody would have to.
Yeah, I thought, I think you just said that all package stores.
Well, I mean, other than he specifically asked for a, a, a specific accommodation, right, like a, like, almost like an entertainment license.
Yeah.
Right, but we, I mean, we, we can grant a license and I suppose we could get discriminatory, but I don't think that's a precedent you wanna set.
I'm not, I'm suggesting quite the opposite, I'm suggesting that we just blank it and say that we'll extend.
And.
Yeah, we got the license, can do it tonight.
Correct.
Yeah, and there's two outstanding, and, well, there's a third somewhere in the ether, but.
Yep, yes.
We'll go back two years for that.
Back two years isn't talked about.
Um.
We might talk about it.
Okay, yeah, would somebody like to make a motion to, um, extend the hours for the all package and beer and malt liquor licenses on Sundays till?
Well, on, just, just that one side.
No, no.
On, the, the one on, the, the time on Sundays for Sunday, yep, alright.
May I? Moved that we extend the, um, beer with me, all. Uh, yeah, uh, the, we, move that we extend the hours on, uh, Sunday, December twenty-three for holders of retail package, all alcohol licenses, such that hours of operation extend up until nine P M if so desired.
Second.
Um, hold on.
Thanks.
Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um.
Aye.
The only reason I hesitated was, should we include the retail package licenses as well from wine and malt?
What did I say?
You said retail package, all alcohol, so I'm looking at this, this subset.
What's that subset?
The subset would be Ladies Fish Market and Barrel and Vine, so we can do a second motion.
Malins.
Yeah. But, uh, uh, move that we extend operating hours for retail package wine and malt licenses on December twenty-three, two thousand eighteen, to allow operation until nine P M, if so desired.
Good motion, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay.
Okay, the next one is, so, the town is a member of Maya, uh, and there is a lunch and business meeting on the Saturday? Is that correct, Tracy?
Yes.
Yeah, the Saturday of the, of the meeting, which is, uh.
Yeah, January twenty, twentieth and twenty-first is, I sent you guys out an email about the, um, annual conference, it's right there.
Right.
So it's, um, yes, it's Saturday the nineteenth, um, and we can have up to six people at the lunch. Uh, we also need to have a voting delegate, I've served in that capacity before, I think one of you have served, I think you served one year, Kevin, so, um, the town just needs to, does it, it, it's really not, not, they're terribly controversial, but, um, it just, but, you know, it's voting on a series of, you know, I think it's the directors and things of that sort, you're gonna go anyway 'cause you're on my board, so, the board would doesn't make somebody, I think, I'm happy to do it, and if it, or one of you can do it as a voting delegate, and then if anyone wants to come to the lunch, just let us know and we'll just let them know to block it, uh, some seats off, it's free, um, so, and that's, um, what time is it? It's at noon in the ballroom, so, usually it's, and, and there's usually some great presentations, I think the year that you did a few years ago, Kevin, they did a presentation on auto. Oh, yeah. Uh, autonomous vehicles.
Yeah.
There's usually a presentation on some trending topic in insurance.
Yep.
Uh, health or workers' comp or whatever, and then there's also, um, business, board business, that also discusses the rate ranges and things of that sort, so, um, it's always a good, it's always a good, but we've been going regularly.
Insurance. No. Twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, this would be Saturday the twenty-sixth, right?
The town. Saturday the nineteenth, the meeting, the meeting's the nineteenth, it's, it's Martin Luther King weekend this year, it's a business game.
What? Oh, that's not the conference.
No. This is, yeah, this is at the MMA meetings.
Is that the conference?
Yeah. Yeah, but, uh.
What? It's part of the conference.
It's almost part of the conference, yeah.
So it's a long, that long weekend?
Yeah, it's, it's Martin Luther King, unless they've given us the wrong date, it's, it's, uh.
No, it, it was last time, it was at the conference, um, when I, so I mean, when I went to the dinner, it was during the conference.
Um.
Friday, Thursday, Christmas, at the conference.
Yeah, it's the eighteenth and nineteenth of August. That's Martin Luther King weekend.
Friday Saturday?
Sorry, yes, it's Friday Saturday.
What?
Well.
I, I.
That's okay, you could, I'm just letting you know, so.
I just planned a vacation and bought my flight tickets and did everything, and I'm like fully on board for the Maya conference, which I was, under the impression was the following weekend. Excellent, okay.
I'll take your ticket, I'll go skiing instead.
Yeah, we'll take your vacation for a bit.
I'm not, I'm not going skiing for the first time.
Whatever, we're flexible.
I'll ski a while.
Is it?
You're going to Disney World!
Ask her in accommodations, I'll bring her, right?
And I'll, I'll go second class.
I mean, I, I think with the toss up between going to a Maya convention and going to Disney World is clear, you know, you have a duty.
Oh, man.
Sorry.
Patrick would enjoy it, some boyfriends, right?
Ooh.
He's not going, it's a girl's trip, so.
This case is interesting, well, in that case.
It's getting really interesting, O M G.
You've got a lot of spine.
Does anyone wanna be the delegate, uh, that day?
Cause Diane's not gonna be there, I'm gonna be on it's a whirlwind after all.
It's only the boss I'm afraid, this is only the, this is the MMA world, it's supposed to be Disney.
Oh, man.
By the way, I don't need, I, we can get the free meal without being a delegate? We're supposed to respond by tomorrow, so that's the reason.
Well, I tell you, um, I, in order to make sure that we have one, uh, I move that we appoint Chris at least on a te- on a temporary basis to be the delegate.
I, second.
Chris, unless you can find someone to do his place, that's a good move, Steve.
No, I agree.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yeah, Chris is going.
I, I further move as a contingency that Casey serve as the.
The backup.
I'll give him, uh, I'll give him.
Son of a nutcracker, oh my gosh.
Uh, does anyone, uh, does, does anyone, I know it's early, if anybody is able to attend, let, just let, let us know. Um, the town is also gonna be recognized, uh, as a top five Maya community, we just got that word.
What is that?
Lots of questions.
We pay, we're the top.
What is that?
Top five percent of our premium players. Recognized at the, at the, at the meeting, I don't know, and we're gonna be, there's gonna be some folks that we did a photo shoot near yesterday, um, I don't know what that comes with other than I think recognition, but it's, it, it's a recognition that the town has been a great partner and a real collaborator on health and workers' comp and property casualty, and we've really done some great work, so, uh.
What do we get?
Is this a, a, a ten percent?
I think we get, at this point, I think we're just getting.
We do get, I mean, we do get a lot of incentive discounts and things from Maya because of the good work we do on all platforms, um.
Yes.
Trip to Disney?
Yeah. Trip to the Heinz Convention Center.
I, I am so upset because I really love the MMA conference and I think it's just an awesome opportunity for people in town to. And I, yeah, I, I'm really just taking, like, I've already requested all those vacations, I'm, anyway, so, and now it's, anyway, okay, um.
Okay.
Moving right along, um, we are way ahead of schedule, I'm just telling you, but we have, um, you know, reached out to people in the community for a seven fifty-five conversation about town halls, so, most likely we're gonna try to get through some things and then maybe take, um, um, you know, a brief recess.
I know, I know, our dinner break.
Um, water hydration break, um.
So you're not gonna do that until seven fifty-five?
No, only because we told enough people that it's at seven fifty-five, so I think we need to do that, um.
Understood, yes.
Water hydration, this is sauna and meditation time.
Yeah, there we go, we can do that as well, um, so, uh, Chris, do you have any other updates?
He'll go take a.
Um, the, uh, I, uh, the, the last three weeks have been very successful between Jingle Bell Walk, the, um, uh, the fair, the village fair, and then the holiday stroll. Uh, I was, uh, unable to be here this past weekend, I was here two weekends ago, but I understand that this weekend went very successfully, uh, I know several of you were down, downtown, um, great business at the local restaurants, uh, a great crowd came down, I think it was very well received. So I, I know this, there's a goal to keep building the village, I think there's a real, was a great, great vibe going on down there, which is great, um, so that's, uh, you know, from, from that perspective, I think everything's gone very well. And, uh, and the fact that we haven't had rain in, in the last week and a half has been great, so, I think it's been trying out a little bit, um, uh, I think, I, I, I'll do some other, uh, year end things next week, but pretty much, you know, at the moment, we're, oh, I, I, I would say thank you again to everyone who participated in the town meeting. Thank you to all the citizens who came in, a hundred and twenty-five, uh, voters who took, took part last night, thank you to all of you and to all the other boards and committees who, uh, did a lot of work in, in lead up. As a result, uh, there were eight very important articles, they got. As a result, uh, there were eight very important articles, they got voted, they got well discussed, very well vetted in the answer, but, but also discussed that evening, and it was a very smoothly run meeting, uh, and a lot of very good business was conducted, so, um, I was very, um, I was very grateful for the success last night, so, thank you. Uh, I don't know, they actually have new handicap parking spaces that are actually at the, uh, the entrance down at the back, I don't know if anyone used them last night, but there are five handicap parking spaces, so people can note that for, uh, the meeting in, in April, on April twenty-ninth, that, uh, there's, uh, those have been, and there was a reconfiguration, so there's, the space is now up there, so it's easier for people who, who need to park close to look to get right in there, so, uh, uh, there were actually four kids who came to the, um, the, 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 uh, childcare aspect, which was good, there was a little leftover pizza, which I got a couple pieces up here, um, but otherwise, I think that made it very smooth in the last night, so, uh, and now, uh, you know, we started the budget process, that's in underway, the capital budget process already started, we've actually had a party around the meetings, we have another one next week, but that's moving nice and smoothly, so, we're on target to, to actually now start asking people for their comments and their whole placeholders for the, uh, warrant, that'll be going out in the next week or so, and we'll want those back in the fire in January, so, um, so that's.
Do we need to do a timeline for annual town meeting?
There is, there's one that was already published, we'll, I'll re-release it.
But we didn't vote it, I mean, it, just in terms of accepting citizen petitions and that other, those other things?
Yeah, there's, that's, that, we did that, we, we released that in August, so I, I can re-release it, but there's already, all the deadlines are written out there.
But we don't need to vote any, any deadlines, okay?
Nope. It's all, once you set the date officially at the last meeting, April twenty-nine, everything locked into place.
It's, it's open, it's open. Okay, yep.
Uh, but I'll, we'll, we'll re-release those dates, the, the citizen petition, that'll happen sometime in February, but we'll re-remind everybody after the holidays, so everyone knows the dates, so, but start thinking, we already, we've already had, we had a conversation today, and I had a, uh, at the core manager meeting this morning, uh, and we went through some, some topics that might be coming up, so.
Okay.
And we already looked ahead to next year's schedule, so, and we plan budget meetings for the beginning of January, so, those are all, those are all set, so.
Good. Great, thanks, um, move to selectmen update, Kevin?
Um, someone else brought it to me again last night about the affordable housing, and I think the issue is that, uh, some people would like to see the, uh, s-, uh, form the board, that, you know, we have the, we have the practical board that looks at the organization, but actually formally form the board that'll, uh, make recommendations for funds for us to allocate, and then also discuss or actually figure out how we can do some funding of it, whether we do something from the budget or C P C or whatever. So, um, I was, since it's come up to me more than once, and I think Diane's brought it up, can we put this on an agenda so that, and maybe even have affordable housing here?
Yeah.
Or whoever's there, and, and discuss this issue and move one way, however we're gonna move on it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right. Yeah, I intended to distribute to the whole board the list I gave you for time tick, cause that is, uh, they have asked to be on our agenda, so, I think affordable housing needs to come in, we need to get a next update from them, and then we need to have a discussion about the steering, trust or whatever.
And also funding of it is what they're, some people are interested in, whether we.
There's, there's two pieces, there's the steering committee.
Correct.
Whose job it is to, if you will, create and advocate.
Right.
Right? The trust is the administrative fiduciary function.
Right.
The trust is in existence, but to the best of my knowledge, I don't think there is a appointed trustee to it.
Correct.
That's the issue, that's the issue.
Right, yeah.
Right, but they, they, uh, effectively, though, their, their, their bo- their role is administrative and fiduciary in nature.
Exactly.
Right, yeah.
Right?
But they wanna stay, talk about it and act on it, you know, and maybe discuss how it can be funded, would be funded, so, that's the issue.
They can say, yeah, 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 so, so I.
So, we, we, so if that, people ask me about that again, I can say, well, they will do this.
Yeah, Rob reached out to me maybe last week, and I absolutely intend to put it on an agenda, probably the first meeting after the new year.
Next to a meeting, yeah, okay.
Yep, yep.
So if I hear a bunch of.
So I just wanna raise an issue, I mean, I'm supposed to be, I've done nothing on this, so I talk to that, but, you know, I, I actually think we should have a plan for how we're gonna do affordable housing.
Right.
And I'm not sure we have one.
Well, the committee has been working on that, right?
Remember, you also have the housing production plan that you should be getting, meeting with, it's almost to give some input into that, too, there should be some.
Well, there's, I, I think part of Jack's point is, we, we each, uh, add goals and objectives, took on a role, right, affordable housing. So, I, but I've done nothing, I mean, I, I, I fully admit that, and I, I haven't talked to anybody, but, you know, I think the way I would approach this problem would be to say, what's our ten-year plan for affordable housing, and try to reach consensus around it, and having said that, I know everybody's been working very hard on it, I know, I know there's a lot of stuff that's been done, and I'm totally on the outside, so I will make an effort to get more involved.
How about if I do this, just because the committee, the steering committee, has asked to come before us.
Yeah, that's the place to.
To, once again, update us on the plan that they were working on, and I can't remember whether it's five, ten, then there's the housing production plan. When that is, I mean, maybe what we do, uh, what I'll do is I'll loop you guys into just the request and my response to it, so you know and you have his contact, and then if they're meeting before, we're able to get them on an agenda, but I think we do need to have a very big discussion about what next steps are for each of them, like, if they, if they only have a four-year production plan, making it up, and we decide that we want them to go back and put together a ten, then we charge them with that, then we start looking at the funding sources, the trust, and figure out where we're gonna go with it.
Agreed.
Well, to, to, Kevin, Kevin's point, um, with respect to the currently non-rostered trust.
Mm-huh.
Should be addressed by us, and it doesn't have to wait for specific action.
I agree.
Okay?
Yep.
Um, uh, uh, effectively, you, you would, I would think we would want the trust, um, I'm sorry, the trustees appointed prior to their, um, receipt of properties to be overse- overseeing.
Sure, I, I mean, I don't know that it's, I mean, we could potentially discuss populating and putting it out there that we're looking for trustees as early as next week.
Yes.
Well, that's what they want. Yeah, that's what we wanted, they want us to do, and that also by, that'll create, uh, some energy behind the whole thing, because, uh, people who are in that position will be, want to do something, and there's evidently people who are probably interested in it, so, let's give it the impetus and, and fill the committee, and then have these discussions and just move ahead.
Does anybody know if there are trust documents, I mean, are there goings?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's also.
And we set this all a couple years ago.
But the, back up for just a second, I, and, uh, I defer to Chris on this, can I, would you check with, um, the town clerk? And just, just to ascertain that my memory is right, and that we don't have trustees appointed, it would be pretty embarrassing to find out that we're, we're stepping on our own feet.
Yeah, Chris, I, I think you did this in the summer, cause we had this discussion, and, right?
Yes, and I, I stuff in my head and advice, I wanna spit it out with having double check.
Okay. Fair enough.
But if, I, if, if we do have someone appointed, what is their term?
Yeah.
Um, if, if it's vacant, that's fine, because part of that, I think, is then the board, a board discussion surrounding what sorts of skill sets and, and, uh, and approaches do you, do you want staff with?
And see if they wanna continue if they're willing.
Yeah.
And, and from my memory, we had that discussion, too, cause we had, you, you had it.
Ninety-nine percent sure they were all.
That, that's the whole reason, let's get this up on our agenda and discuss this.
Right. We can do that really quickly, cause it's literally just a housekeeping task, and then we can say, this is the charge, cause it's by bylaw, and we can have a discussion, let people know that we're interested in applications, and then when we come back and meet with the actual steering committee, which is separate, in early January, we'll have some more substance. Okay?
I got a second one, we have time?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know we have an halftime, right?
Get all the time.
I had formed you to keep you updated on the, uh, national grid power issue and so forth, little subcommittee that we inform at our committee we put together, of which Chris was a part and myself. Um, and so, to update you, Chris wrote a very good letter to, uh, National Grid, you know, laying out, um, uh, our concerns and expressing, right, we thought very well, and also with three or four or five actual concrete suggestions that we had come up with on our committee to put on the table, and in a very nice but firm way, asked for a meeting. So, that went in the mail a week or two ago, and so we're looking forward to having that meeting, I wanna make sure you're updated to that extent, so is the public or whatever, and also, uh, did you get a copy of it? I don't know, you guys, sorry.
Yes, we all got it, yep.
You're sorry, so that's all going along, and, um, we're moving along on it the best we can.
I did get some feedback today that we should get a date pretty soon.
Okay.
Probably, at this point, I'll probably be wrapped with person here, we'll meet as a group, I'm gonna try to set a date for next week, so we can meet internally before any.
Sounds good.
If necessary, what's the escalation? If a meeting turns out to just be a happy handshake?
Uh, we'll come back and regroup, uh, I, 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 I'm optimistic that'll be more than that, uh, cause this wasn't just a, you stink, you know, uh, come and let us beat you up, this was, there are challenges, here are concrete things we need to talk about, uh, they're taking it, from my understanding, very seriously, too, about, cause we, you know, we're not, we're, we've off, we've identified some areas that are very clearly issues, uh, and we're willing to work with them on them, uh, some of them are partnering like training issues, um, and community education issues, some of them are very.
Yeah, some of these are, if I may, they're, they're very concrete, too, like, uh, so it's gonna be hard for them to say, no, oh, yeah, I mean, they, it's not, we didn't put out vague stuff, there were several concrete things, so that'll help with your, with your question, cause we don't, I don't wanna see it lie like that either, I agree.
Yeah, well, it's, it, it just, it com- it's related but unrelated, um, a contractor working on a auxiliary project here in town, I'll just leave it at that for the moment, has been in the process of trying to, um, finalize their construction plans, um, and they're having difficulties with National Grid, wow, I take it back, is it National Grid or resource, I can't remember which.
National Grid is.
National Grid.
Having some difficulties with National Grid, uh, because they've suddenly come back and said, well, you know, your hookup to the grid is a six hundred thousand dollar expense, and up to this point, it's been a ridiculously smaller number. And, uh, what they're supplying is thirteen-two feed, and if, if there's a suspicion that maybe they're, you know, they're, they're being asked to cover costs that are unrelated to the project, so, it's, you know, I, it's be- it's become a more interesting dynamic.
I'd like to know more about that.
I will be happy to share it with you, and I, I, because it's, it's, i- i- um, the conversation took place between myself and another person related to the project, I'd rather not get more into it in public at the moment.
No, I understand. There is actually, one of the fears in town is not thirteen-two.
That's my point.
Uh, and, and they should up, and that's what something would identify as something that needs to grade, i- i- it's like a nineteen fifties wire, it's, it's the wire that runs up South Main Street, so.
Yeah, it, it, there was a, there was a suspicion on this person's part that maybe they were, they were being asked to cover costs that were thoroughly unrelated to their supply.
Well, happy to find out more about that, but that's something we've already identified as an issue that they need to fix.
Yeah, that, that, which, I mean, that, that keeps you from rerouting, right? Okay.
Okay, I'm all set.
Paul?
Uh, too quickly, the holiday stroll was really quite well attended, I thought it was a, a good group, and it.
Couldn't move.
Yeah, it was, it was great, um, so we're gonna thank all the local merchants and the chairman of commerce, because they stepped up at the last moment and nearly ended rolling with, I understand, three thousand dollars of donations for the lights alone, as well as the.
Wow.
Fact they opened up their businesses to the public, which is nice, um, and the other thing on December thirteenth, seven to eight thirty P M, the town hall auditorium is a, uh, South Shore, uh, symposium on the current epidemic, uh, popuoids in the South Shore, there'll be Joan Mesquino, who's the state representative, uh, a couple of, uh, other representatives of, uh, healthcare, and the state, uh, governor's office will be there as well, so that'll be in town hall, seven to eight thirty P M.
What night again?
It's Thursday.
Uh, December thirteenth, tomorrow.
It's, it, in two nights.
I'm sorry, Thursday, Thursday.
Thursday, yeah, yeah.
And I think, isn't there a head of emergency medicine from South Shore coming, I think, as well, someone from South Shore, I suppose, yeah, yeah.
He is.
And then, uh, the chair of the state joint committee, I think, on healthcare, or, or addiction, or, yeah.
So it's, uh, founder and director, learned to cope, who was Joey Ann Peterson, Dr. Janet Limkey, the psychiatrist and the medical director of the Spine Center in South Shore, Emery Wilton, who was a local, uh, co-house parent, um, in addition to, uh, Dr. Jason Tracy, the chair of the emergency department in South Shore, and Denise Garland, who was the house chair for the joint committee on medical health, substance use and recovery. She has a, a lot of authority at the, uh, governance level as well, so, um, I'm sure she'll be able to bring, uh, ideas. That's all I have.
Awesome. Jack?
Good, thank you.
Steve?
I'm better than good. I actually, no, I have, uh, nothing to, to add on that.
Okay, so, um, I guess I'm gonna ask for advice, we, we posted a discussion about town hall at seven fifty-five P M, um, I know I sent it out to a lot of people.
You did, you did.
That we would be, we'll get there, yeah, um, that we would be, um, meeting at seven five fif- fifty-five for public input, so I, I, I kind of feel like I don't wanna start it now. I, I would be happy to start it a little early, so that, but not at seven twenty, um.
If you start it at seven thirty, and then allow people to talk and give input who are already here.
Yeah.
By the time you get to seven fifty-five, if people, people can still attend and then give, it's just, this is not supposed to be a, you weren't looking to have a big back and forth dialogue as far as getting feedback.
Correct.
And I, I also offer the notion that this is a, um, an unstructured discussion, so we're not making progression commentary.
Correct.
So, starting it early does not close out other voices.
Coming in at seven fifty-five, okay, I just wanna make sure everybody was comfortable with that, um, but in the meantime, we do have one set of minutes that we can, um, get to, and then all the business of the meeting will be done, except for the public input on town hall, um.
I think I'm motioning to move forward the, uh, timing of the minutes, uh, in the agenda, to seven nineteen, uh, for the minutes of eleven thirteen eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Like, like a motion to approve the minutes of eleven thirteen two thousand and eighteen, to have a crossboard select the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay.
We have a few minutes anyways, just a technicality, can, couldn't the chair say, you know, I, I, uh, I am, I'm gonna move the meeting minutes up ten minutes unless there's any objection, without taking votes on this every time, huh?
Oh, you do take a vote on it.
You do have to take a vote on it? Just curious.
You definitely can't start stuff earlier, but, yeah.
Do you wanna take a, take a break and start back at seven thirty, you wanna start now?
No, but I mean, I can't.
Yeah, uh, well, um.
You can do it, but parliamentary, have to.
Well, no, we wanna do it right, I, I.
Yeah, we might as well just keep going, I, I mean, I think we'll at least be discussing this, is, is that all right with you guys? We s- we, we move forward with the, the town hall discussion?
Yeah.
So.
The options are a break for ten minutes.
Break for ten?
Yeah, let's break for ten.
Wanna break for ten?
I think we should, I mean, I think some people are gonna be upset.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, all right, if we're too far along, cause it, uh, posting it at seven fifty-five also means.
So did we do the minutes, or move in on it?
Yes, we.
Yep, we're all set.
Roll that, just made a.
All right, so we're gonna take a recess until seven thirty.
So what time we, we're back.
Seven thirty?
So it's taking a turn with a break.
Run down six.
Oh, okay.
I know, I'm on it, too, do they deliver? I know, I know, too. Do they deliver? um, a little bit earlier in the agenda, but we'll make sure we're still talking at, um, seven fifty five. So, the purpose of tonight's discussion is specifically relating to the old town hall um, and administrative and programmatic uses. So we're not gonna get into the benefit of the bigger project, what we're gonna do with this building, but simply, um, seeking input from the community on the following three questions, or the, this question and the, the proposed answers. How should the historic town hall building be utilized? One, use the building for municipal purposes only, build out offices with the space that is now the auditorium. Two, use the building for both municipal purposes as well as civic and cultural use, primarily the auditorium for cultural purposes. Or three, use the building for civic and cultural uses only, which would preclude it from having any municipal function. So it's kinda all or nothing, I think. Um, the selectmen are primarily here to listen, um, and obviously, we'll, if we have questions that we wanna just probe some of your commentary a little bit more, we'll do that. Um, I'm gonna try to keep it as orderly as possible, 'cause what I don't want it to do is to become a free-flowing conversation, because we won't, we won't get to where we need. What we really need is as much
Yeah.
a data info input as we can gather tonight. Next week, the board of selectmen's gonna meet again, and we're gonna have, um, some pretty delineated, finely delineated action items, including looking at the charge that we adopted last January for the project. Um, discussing the next steps with a, a, um, populating or recharging a, a building committee or some variation thereof. Um, discussion of where we can and, where we can go with respect to the, the, um, the designs and projects that were offered up last year, and where we stand with architects and all that kinda stuff. So we're gonna really try to have a, probably an hour contained meeting next Tuesday for the selectmen to use the input that any of you offered tonight to, um, advance these conversations. And then after the new year, we're gonna have to hit the ground running with something, with, with, with some action on, um, these buildings. So, um, what I would like to ask those of you that are here to speak to do is come up one at a time, at least initially, till we get a flow. Um, obviously introduce yourself for people at home. And, um, let us know what you think. And I know a lot of you are here, um, representing committees, or have input from your committees that you might serve on, um, and so please, if you're expressing your personal ideas, or those of your committee, just make sure we understand where that's coming from. So, uh, selectmen, Kevin, do you have a question?
Just, um, Tracy will be taking notes of what the main points are that are being made, and then distributing to us in the next few days.
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm gonna take notes too, 'cause I'm a note taker. Any other selectmen comments?
Not at the outset.
All right. Wayne, do you have a question, or do you wanna be the first?
I'll be the first.
Come on up. Can you sit up? Sorry.
Good idea.
No, please. Only because, right, because I'll, I'll hear it from somebody at home, I'll get a thing, right. We can't see, we can't hear.
My name is Wayne Sawchuk, I live at four thirty two Bee Twix Street, Cohasset, Massachusetts, and I've been in Cohasset all my life. And I think the best use of the old town hall is to initially make the deal that the municipal group will take over, manage, fix up the first floor, and at such time, and have in their lease or sale agreement. And at such time that the second floor shall be vacated by the town, either through whatever means, they go to a new building, they do this, and they would take that space over, renovate, fix it up, and that would be part of the, both, uh, community and arts type of organization that will, that would run this. And so that's what I comment.
Um, I, I, I am gonna start with, with questions, unless anybody, so you think we should lease, sell, otherwise, the initial, the first floor? And then let that kind of organically, potentially, and hopefully, move to something where that is no longer in a municipal function?
Right, and, and it would have the provision that it could be used for voting and things like that as needed, in other words, there would be a, very much like the light keepers.
Yeah.
The, the, you know, town can use it for certain things, and they, and, and they can rent it to other people to help pay the cost of it. The second floor, see, the second and third question is one, you can't answer the third question yesterday, because the town can't vacate that space yesterday. If they could, then I'd recommend, obviously, to take the whole building over. But I think that, that's not, that can't happen in reality. If you wanna have a plan that you can actually act on going forward in January, it has to be, okay, uh, you know, we got an organization that will work on this, they can get funding, they can apply for grants, they can do all this. And, you know, while the town is doing whatever they're doing, 'cause it's like temporary housing for the town
Mm-hmm.
for the offices that they're using for it. I don't, I don't see, uh, Steve, I don't see where it can get, where you can do a deal for it now without having a, an answer for where the people are going, so.
Yeah.
Directionally, you, you see value in a civic and cultural use. And that, as you point out, that that would eventually encompass, uh, the use of the structure in its entirety. But it, but there's a, there's a transitional period with second floor occupancy. Does that sound right?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Um, one, one question about this idea, because this is not, obviously, the first time any of us have heard it. Um, one of my concerns, just in general, is but we gotta do something with that building today in terms of preserving it and historically renovating it. So do we, do we do that, or do we immediately put out an R F P for occupancy and leave it to that entity, that potential bidder entity, renter, cultural organization, to take on the responsibility of historically preserving and renovating the building?
Depending on whether you did a long-term lease, or you had a deal with, with maybe an op, you know, being able to, I, I would like it always to be in the town of Cohasset and not be turned into, um,
Right.
a seven eleven, whatever it is, and, or, you know, something for a commercial use. It is much like renting, uh, office space. If you can get a tenant allowance, or if you can get the landlord to do certain things, put a new roof on, or fix the roof, fix up the outside of it, replace the windows, the certain restrictive things, okay? Now, I believe that can be funded with C P C money and/or some grants, but I think it would be easier to get, uh, money to, uh, do that work without calling it, without calling it maintenance, 'cause it really has to be restored, meaning you you have to take the window casings off, you have to do certain things, change the glass, do, do certain things that really make it a capital project, not a, just go up there with a paintbrush and paint it. That's not the solution for that building. Like you want it so that it, the paint isn't gonna peel anymore, the paint, you know, things have to be fixed. So, um, the money aspect of that has to be worked out, because a nonprofit going in on day one can't spend the money on that. They would, but they could spend the money on refurnishing, you know, refinishing the floors, providing, you know, new lighting, uh, fixing up, putting in air, air conditioning in. Those things a tenant would do in the inside, just like an, an office tenant would come in and bring their own furniture, you know, make their own little computer room, do that type of thing.
He would build that.
So, and, and I'm speaking for myself, so there are plenty of other people that, that certainly wanna talk. So.
Any, do you guys have any questions?
Yes.
So, in your vision there, if this ended up where the, the first floor was just, as you said, an open use, light keeper model type thing. And then at the end of the day, however the deliberations went, we ended up using the upstairs for offices for the town, uh, and would that be consistent with your vision, would that be acceptable to your vision?
Well, I, I think there is a tremendous value in having, um, good office space for the nonprofits that are using it. You know, you have so many organizations, the light keepers, it's out of three different people's houses, right? And it would be so much nicer if they had a room on the first floor that was the office for that entity, you know, that someplace where, where, you know, you'd be
Give me the second floor.
So that's why I talked about the second floor here as being one of, um, let's say you had four cultural groups, you've got the playhouse associates, you've got the music associates, and you've got another one. It would be good for them to have space. That space may also end up being rehearsal space, um, for, you know, for musicians, uh, for, for acting, reading lines, doing this type of thing, while you don't open up the whole downstairs for doing those things.
So you see the whole thing, isn't it?
Classes could be given, I'm a music professor, teacher or something, I can give, you know, piano lessons, in other words, it would really be cultural, musical and all that.
The whole building.
The, the whole building.
Now, if that involved charging, uh, rental and so, for the upstairs for a nonprofit to use, that's in, within your vision to
It would have to, yeah.
It would have to be.
In other words, in, in, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking of, of places, even the South Shore Arts Center and stuff, it's got programs that are out, they've outgrown their building that they could, they could come into some of this space, whether it's short term or whether it's long term. In other words, there are other agencies and organizations that can use more space.
Just, just for the, and I'll let you speak, just to follow up on that, I, I, I
One, use the building for municipal purposes only, build out offices within the space that is now the auditorium. Two, use the building for both municipal purposes as well as civic and cultural use, primarily the auditorium for cultural purposes. Or three, use the building for civic and cultural uses only, which would preclude it from having any municipal function. So it's kind of all or nothing, I think. The selectmen are primarily here to listen. And obviously, we'll, if we have questions that we wanna just probe some of your commentary a little bit more, we'll do that. I'm gonna try to keep it as orderly as possible, cause what I don't want it to do is to become a free-flowing conversation, because we won't, we won't get to where we need. What we really need is as much
Yeah.
a data info input as we can gather tonight. Next week, the board of selectmen's gonna meet again, and we're gonna have some pretty delineated, finely delineated action items, including looking at the charge that we adopted last January for the project. Discussing the next steps with a populating or recharging a building committee or some variation thereof. Discussion of where we can and where we can go with respect to the, the designs and projects that were offered up last year, and where we stand with architects and all that kinda stuff. So we're gonna really try to have a, probably an hour contained meeting next Tuesday for the selectmen to use the input that any of you offered tonight to advance these conversations. And then after the new year, we're gonna have to hit the ground running with something, with some action on these buildings. So, what I would like to ask those of you that are here to speak to do is come up one at a time, at least initially till we get a flow. Obviously introduce yourself for people at home, and let us know what you think. And I know a lot of you are here representing committees, or have input from your committees that you might serve on. And so please, if you're expressing your personal ideas, or those of your committee, just make sure we understand where that's coming from. So, selectmen, Kevin, do you have a question?
Tracy will be taking notes of what the main points are that are being made, and then distributing to us in the next few days.
Yep, yep, yep. I'm gonna take notes too, cause I'm a note taker. Any other selectmen comments? Alright, Wayne, do you have a question, or do you wanna be the first?
I'll be the first.
Come on up, can you sit up? Sorry.
You're right, yeah.
No, please. Only because, right, because I'll, I'll hear it from somebody at home, I'll get a thing, right. We can't see, we can't hear.
My name is Wayne Sawchuk, I live at four thirty-two Bee Twix Street, Cohasset, Massachusetts, and I've been in Cohasset all my life. And I think the best use of the Old Town Hall is to initially make the deal that the municipal group will take over, manage, fix up the first floor, and at such time, and have in their lease or sale agreement. And at such time that the second floor shall be vacated by the town either through whatever means. They go to a new building, they do this, and they would take that space over, renovate, fix it up, and that would be part of the both a community and arts type of organization that will, that would run this. And so that's what I comment.
I, I, I am gonna start with, with questions, unless anybody's. So, you think we should lease, sell, otherwise, the initial, the first floor? And then let that kind of organically, potentially, and hopefully move to something where that is no longer in a municipal function?
Right, and, and it would have the provision that it could be used for voting and things like that as needed. In other words, there would be a, very much like the lightkeepers.
Yep.
The, you know, town can use it for certain things, and they, and, and they can rent it to other people to help pay the cost of it. The second floor, see, the second and third question is one, you can't answer the third question yes today, because the town can't vacate that space yesterday. If they could, then I'd recommend, obviously, to take the whole building over. But I think that, that's not, that can't happen in reality. If you wanna have a plan that you can actually act on going forward in January, it has to be, okay, you know, we got an organization that will work on this, they can get funding, they can apply for grants, they can do all this. And, you know, while the town is doing whatever they're doing, cause it's like temporary housing for the town, for the offices that they're using for it. I don't, I don't see, Steve, I don't see where you can get, where you can do a deal for it now without having a, an answer for where the people are going. So.
Yep.
Directionally, you, you see value in a civic and cultural use? And that, as you point out, that that would eventually encompass the use of the structure in its entirety. But it, but there's a, there's a transitional period with second floor occupancy. Does that sound right?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Alright.
One, one question about this idea, because this is not, obviously, the first time any of us have heard it. One of my concerns, just in general, is, but we gotta do something with that building today in terms of preserving it and historically renovating it. So do we, do we do that, or do we immediately put out an RFP for occupancy and leave it to that entity, that potential bidder entity, renter, cultural organization, to take on the responsibility of historically preserving and renovating the building?
Depending on whether you did a long-term lease, or you had a deal with, with maybe an op, you know, being able to. I would like it always to be in the town of Cohasset and not be turned into
Right.
a seven eleven, whatever it is, and, you know, something for a commercial use. It is much like renting office space. If you can get a tenant allowance, or if you can get the landlord to do certain things, put a new roof on, or fix the roof, fix up the outside of it, replace the windows, the certain restrictive things, okay. Now, I believe that can be funded with CPC money and/or some grants. But I think it would be easier to get money to do that work without calling it, without calling it maintenance, cause it really has to be restored, meaning you, you have to take the window casings off, you have to do certain things, change the glass, do, do certain things that really make it a capital project, not a, just go up there with a paintbrush and paint it. That's not the solution for that building. Like you want it so that it, the paint isn't gonna peel anymore, the paint, you know, things have to be fixed. So, the money aspect of that has to be worked out, because a nonprofit going in on day one can't spend the money on that. They would, but they could spend the money on refurnishing, you know, refinishing the floors, providing, you know, new lighting, fixing up, putting in air conditioning in, those things a tenant would do in the inside, just like an office tenant would come in and bring their own furniture, you know, make their own little computer room, do that type of thing. So, and, and I'm speaking for myself, so there are plenty of other people that, that certainly wanna talk, so.
Any, do you guys have any questions?
Yes.
So, in your vision there, if this ended up where the first floor was just, as you said, an open use, lightkeeper model type thing, and then at the end of the day, however the deliberations went, we ended up using the upstairs for offices for the town, and would that be consistent with your vision, would that be acceptable to your vision?
There is a tremendous value in having good office space for the nonprofits that are using it. You know, you have so many organizations, the lightkeepers, it's out of three different people's houses, right? And it would be so much nicer if they had a room on the first floor that was the office for that entity, you know, that someplace where, where, you know, you'd be.
Give me the second floor.
So that's why I talked about the second floor here as being one of, let's say you had four cultural groups. You've got the playhouse associates, you've got the music associates, and you've got another one. It would be good for them to have space. That space may also end up being rehearsal space for, you know, for musicians, for, for acting, reading lines, doing this type of thing, while you don't open up the whole downstairs for doing those things.
So you see the whole thing, isn't it?
Classes could be given, I'm a music professor, teacher or something, I can give, you know, piano lessons, in other words, it would really be cultural, musical and all that.
The whole building.
The whole building.
Now, if that involved charging rental and so, for the upstairs for a nonprofit to use it, that's in, within your vision to?
It would have to, yeah.
It would have to be.
In, in, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking of, of places, even the South Shore Arts Center and stuff, it's got programs that are out, they've outgrown their building that they could, they could come into some of this space, whether it's short term or whether it's long term. In other words, there are other agencies and organizations that can use more space.
Just, just for the, and I'll let you speak, just to follow up on that. I, I, I did, I just want everybody to know, I did reach out to some of the cultural organizations in town to invite them, and I can see some of them are coming in, but for that reason, because that is, that's sort of the unknown. Like, the vision is something that I, I see, and I recognize the value of it. The question is, you know, are there really needs for this, this level of cultural space that can pay enough, and, you know, that have the resources to, to use the space, rent the space, and do what they need to do to the space to, to make it usable for them. Steve?
No, I, I, I was going to ask a clarifying question, but I think the, the two conversants got it.
And I think, by the way, that the, the first floor should also come with the basement that's under the building, okay? So that the, the dressing rooms and all that would be part of it. And they would have to make accommodations for making whatever necessary handicap capability. And I was thinking about some of the plans that have been done, and I think that there's some ways to, to make the first floor much more handicapped accessible with a closer handicap ramp. I did the ramp at the church next door, but there's some space that it might be fairly long to come up and go around, but maybe do the front, but, but cut out a lot of things that were very, very expensive with, with the other plans in terms of putting fill up against the building, the whole building and all that stuff. So, put, put the access where it's, where it's needed, make it as convenient as possible, make it as close to the entrance as you can, so that you're not putting a handicapped person going all these different distances around to, for, for other reasons, so.
Stay tuned for design discussions in January. Use discussions, yeah.
So the, the funding for this sort of work will be through the nonprofit, or will it be through the town or municipal aspect?
There, there has to be a, there has to be a working group that, that works, works, works with the town on what, like I said, what, what can be done to make the building, I mean, safe and whole is two things on my mind, but, but basically, have it fixed up without, I mean, we're not, if I was to talk money, let's say there's some sort of a commitment, maybe it's one million dollars, not four million dollars, that does this, this, and this, just like the landlord would do.
Would this be from, sorry, would, would this be from a nonprofit or from the municipal aspect?
I think it has to be, I think it has to be the, from the landlord, okay?
So that would be the town.
Yeah, I would say it's the town, at least initially, because I don't think it's possible for us to separate that, so that they could get a piece of property that they could then mortgage, right?
So, so the redo or the upkeep or the transformation
But a fraction of what was originally anticipated.
Will be, will be done through the town, and then we'll lease back. So you're not looking for monies from the nonprofit to assist in this?
Oh, I think it has to be fundraising, everything else.
So you're, so you're looking for, so you're looking for funding from both the nonprofit and the town?
Maybe two times from the, two times from the nonprofit, one time from the town.
Right.
So, but, but, and by the way, this is, this is something you have to sort of come up with, so that the, the whole concept can actually be, you know, I can now go to you and say, listen, this is what it's gonna cost us, this is what we need. This is what the town's gonna do, this is what we have to raise, this is what we have to do to make it that space.
Yep, Steve?
So I, just, following on from Paul's questions. If, for the sake of discussion, what Paul's asking about is, you know, who's contributing what? Put the dollars aside for the moment. As I understand it, under your thought process, the town would, would step forward to secure the envelope, if you will. So probably either, you know, reciting or something along those lines. Certainly, a, an examination of the, of the glass in the building, and a, and probably replacement. Electrical?
Some.
Yes, systems now.
Electrical work, right. HVAC, eventually.
Some.
No, no, what I'm saying is that there would, I mean, you know, those are the types of things that we'd focus on, roof, right?
We're renting you a shell of a building, that, I mean, we have to have something for them.
But having said that, things like refinishing the floor of the auditorium, putting in specific lighting structures, or specific wiring for those lighting structures. That would be something that would be leasehold purpose, right?
Yes, the BCs.
Right, at the cost of the, of, of, of the lessy.
Right.
Lessy?
Yes, lessor.
Lessy.
Lessy.
The person renting the building, the entity renting the building.
Lessy is the rent cost.
And, and there is enough, yeah, there is enough, there's enough plans and specs and all these things done today that, in fact, it's a case of saying, okay, literally going through the list, okay? And then it's also gonna come up with, maybe this is, what's on the list is gold-plated, so we want silver. And so we're, we're not gonna, and, and that'll give us some rough ideas of costs. You know, what, what is this gonna cost, and what's this gonna, and what's, what are they gonna get and do here? So, for instance, the interior lighting, they'll do this and this. When it comes to if there needs to be a new entrance or something taken off of the other service for a new panel, okay? Then that's something I think the landlord pays for. Everything coming off of it for their use, the lighting, the this, the that, they would take care of. Because they'd be, they'd want the ability to use the asset that they have in different ways than you would normally use it for something else. And they'd also want the ability to be able to make changes. You could use the auditorium for two or three different types of things. You could do it for play, you could do it for concert, you could do it for certain things that might have different components, so that, so that they need that flexibility to, to have their, you know, their own people in there to be able to sort of plug and play as they needed it. And that makes it the most, you know, for the most possible uses that make it professional and worthwhile.
I, I, I know Jack has a couple of questions. I just, I wanna make sure that we stay focused on uses, and we ask questions that help us fully understand what they're, what people are telling us, so that we can, we can move this along, and we, we have the information we need to really get down into the weeds on this next week.
I just, were, were you involved in the lightkeepers rehab?
Yes.
So can you just quickly tell us how that got done, you know, how, within, was it similar to the model you're talking about right now for town hall?
No.
No?
I'll just jump in now, but, but it started off, Tom Meeting was asked to spend thirty thousand dollars to fix up this dilapidated building.
Oh, I wish, I'd pay the thirty thousand dollars.
Here, and then, and then, you know, it morphs into, hey, this probably has a better use. And so, the town paid not nickel one for the restoration of that building, not the nickel one. Now, I think it's only a dollar, dollar yearly leases or something like that, it's not, it's not a big lease.
The annual lease, yeah.
Totally nonprofit funded.
And do you remember what the price tag was?
Three hundred thousand, three hundred thousand.
And now there's a lease between the town and?
I think it was written in probably, it's not, it's just small.
Is, is, there's a, I mean, there's a nonprofit group that runs the, the lightkeepers.
Right.
So there's some kind of lease between the town and the lightkeepers. And do the, and do the lightkeepers do all the maintenance on the building?
One hundred percent. On the building, on the landscaping, all that.
Everything.
And they, they provide two affordable housing units for the town. You know, so that they've, they've, they're absolutely giving something permanently back to the town, not, I mean, if it was a business type of thing, then those apartments would be getting four thousand dollars a month, not less, a lot less.
Okay, can I move us along? Not, no offense, but I just wanna keep us rolling in, let, make sure everybody has a chance?
Fifty percent more than I thought.
I took a lot of notes. Thanks so much, Wayne.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thanks, Wayne.
And, and again, this is, you know, you can always reach out to us if, if you didn't get a word in tonight. Who wants to come up next? Rich, come on up. We are asking people to identify themselves.
Hi, Rich Fitzpatrick, two ham and dav.
Rich.
I'm also a member of the advisory committee, and we had a lengthy discussion on Monday night. I forget when, but this, recently.
Last Thursday.
It was, it was last Thursday? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Monday was telling me.
Monday was telling me. So John Chapman, our chair, wrote up a summary, so I'm gonna deliver that to you.
Okay, and this is from the advisory committee?
This is our, this is based on our deliberations. John summarized it, distributed it, and everybody, the members seemed to be in agreement that, um, it was accurate. Uh, so, we sent, we, we went one by one. So number one, the use of municipal, for municipal purposes only. Uh, build out the offices within the space that is now the auditorium. Uh, there were two members who supported assessing the, this option, and would support it if it was the most, more cost-effective, um, option. Three numbers staunchly opposed even considering it. Number two, the use of the building for both municipal purposes as well as civic and cultural uses, essentially the way it is now, offices on the second floor, first floor auditorium. Uh, five supported this proposal, and two wanted to see a more extensive municipal use explored before deciding on this. If you follow me.
So.
The two, the two, the two people who were in favor of
Number one.
Number one.
Number one, maybe supportive of this, but only if it was a less expensive option than option one. Is that clear?
Yeah.
Yes.
Excuse me, this also sounds like the motivating thought behind those two anyways, within the committee, is a financial orientation, is that?
Not for number one. So for instance, I was opposed to number one. I, I think just for strictly the historic use, it should not be offices, it should be maintained as an auditorium. And that's, at least one other member expressed, strongly expressed that view, and I think the third person also feels that way also, that it should be an auditorium regardless of the cost of the other options.
Yeah, did, did they discuss the, one of the municipal uses being the auditorium for voting? I mean, did that come up specifically?
Yes.
Cause that's one of the things that I, you know, if you have an opinion on, I mean.
Y- so, I think people, what, what people were, I think what people were concerned about was that there would be no auditorium, that it would be, become offices, and I think that was the real objection, not to the use of the auditorium as a polling place. If that makes sense.
Yep.
Okay, and then number three, the use of the building for civic and cultural uses only. We viewed this, I, I think the consensus was is that this was essentially the plan that was voted on last spring, um, you know, having all the municipal offices on this side, and that side, um, you know, being the plan that we voted on and we voted down. And nobody supported that option, essentially on the basis that, that, that has been viewed, discussed, and rejected by the voters.
So, can I, I'm gonna push on that a little bit, because that plan was approved at town meeting as a, as a plan, and what failed was the funding source. And we can go on forever and ever, and we're never gonna really know, you know, where the delineation was. But, um, you know, I just wonder if there was, you know, if you did, did have that discussion, you know, about the plan got to a certain point where it was favorable, and it was, how are we gonna pay for it that ultimately failed?
So, I, I think, I think it was essentially a political, our, our, our deliberations, it was essentially a political.
I'm behind you if you need to.
Okay, thank you, Wayne.
Okay, you should feel really good now.
I, I feel great, I have Lee here too.
I know.
So, I, I, I think it was, I think our, in, in my perspective on that was, it was purely political, not a judgment on the plan itself, but is it worth revisiting a plan that was already voted down?
Fair enough, yep.
So, and I understand that, you know, there were a number of issues of why that was, um, you know, it was approved at town meeting and then rejected at, you know, um, at the election. A lot of factors went into that, was that the best plan? It, it may be, it may still be. But, the con, sort of the consensus was, we had a bite at that apple, and it didn't, it didn't, um, it didn't work out.
Worked for a little while.
Would we wanna, would we wanna, you know, be put in a position again if, if the same thing happened?
Right.
So that was, that was just a purely political, I think, I think, for the people.
Okay. Yep.
Any other questions?
Yeah, well, can I just, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, the, the only question I have is if the latter choice had been available at a lower cost, was that discussed at the meeting?
Number three?
Yeah, so if they were available, let's say, monies from the state.
It, it, it really, it really wasn't because we, you know, we, we don't, you know.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think it was, but.
I think it, I, I, I appreciate the, um, and, and your ability to fill us in on the nature of the discussion that you had. And I do believe it's worthwhile to engage, uh, the conversation maybe further, probably in another time with advisory, when the committee is available to discuss it. Because really, the types of things we're trying to uncover are included in some of the questions that you just received here. And, you know, and I would, I'd posit the same things, you know. What are, under what contingencies does, does any one of these three options change the way you think about it? A good example is the last question that, that Paul asked. I, I, it's not a point of argument, I, I actually don't believe that the plan was rejected. I believe that the price tag was rejected, and that was a pretty, that was a pretty clear statement without a doubt from, you know, from the vote. But I'll never know either. So, one of the things is if you could have your wish list, but, but price it differently, would it, would it gather interest or support? And, and it, it's not something that I think you can answer at the moment, because obviously the committee's not here in whole. But it's worth exploring generally, because ultimately, we, we wanna go back to the, the, the voters in town with a, a well-reasoned, thought-out approach, and a price tag that's accessible and acceptable, so.
So, what, what I would, what I would say to, to Paul and, and your comments is that people's, the support for number two was not based on some belief that we should have offices in the second floor of Old Town Hall. It was based in the fact, I think, I think on the idea that if we have offices on the second floor of the Old Town Hall, it's gonna reduce the cost of whatever happens in the annex.
It's interesting, the analysis showed exactly the opposite. No, no, the analysis of, of the last set of plans.
Right, so I, I think, um, so I think if the, if, if a really good, cost-effective plan left the second floor to civic and cultural use, I think that there would be a lot of support for that. If that, you know, if that was the most cost-effective, or, you know, equal or close, um, that's.
Can, okay, can I ask a blasphemous question?
Yep.
Alright. What if, because it's been a cost driver all, all along, what if we didn't need to follow a historic renovation for that old building? Yeah, I know, I know. But, and I, I ask that, and I ask it of anybody who is hoping to, or not hoping, but it would like to talk tonight. Give that some consideration, not because I'm suggesting that it's the right way to go, but it is, it, it is a cost consideration, so.
There, there is, yeah, there is one issue with that, which is, it's on, it's within the Cohasset Common Historic District, so we would have to, that would be a whole nother level of approval.
I understand, I understand, but I'm, I'm, and I'm asking the question for feedback. I'm not proposing it, I'm just asking the question for feedback.
Correct, I understand, yep.
It does, it does remarkably change the characteristic of any project with the historic building.
Only talks to the facade though, Steve.
I, I'm sorry, Diane's gonna, Diane's gonna take it.
I'm going, I'm going, Jack.
Well, I just wanted to ask a clarify, what does that mean? I mean, what, what are you suggesting with that kind of a question?
I'm asking the question as to whether or not, if it, if it dramatically changes the cost of, of renovation on that side, because you're no longer held in place by historic requirements. For instance, you, you could put in replica windows as opposed to historically accurate windows. Would it, would it make a difference in the considerations that any of the folks here Would it, would it make a difference in the considerations that any of the folks here would have? Would it make a consider, would it make a difference to y'all?
Well, and as we've discussed, there's cost and then there's funding, so, right, so that shuts off a whole lane of funding.
No, 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 I, I. I, I, I understand, I'm, I'm, I, I'm not saying that I have the answers, I'm simply asking the question, okay?
Right. Right.
Because it, it ultimately, one of the cost drivers in this last project. Was that the historic renovation which attached an enormous price tag. The, there's feedback coming saying, well, look, I mean, you know, from the advisory committees looking at saying, jeez, I mean, if you could keep the offices there and it could keep down costs, maybe that would work. And I'm just asking the question because it opens up a range of possibilities, what if, what if you could do the entire project for. Sixty percent of the number that we went to town meeting for, because basically we can make the improvements we need and keep offices where they are, and it's minimal disruption, and you can still program out the auditorium, et cetera, et cetera.
Sure. Sure.
All right, that's, that's where it's going.
That question too for next week, so.
All right.
Diane, do you have any comment about that?
Hang on, I want the selectmen to go, and I'm really trying to manage this discussion properly. Jack, do you have any more questions?
I just wanna point out that, you know, costs are coming up as a common theme here.
Yep.
So I think we as selectmen have to be sensitive to that and figure out a way to.
Yep.
Answer those questions, I, I don't have a specific.
Nope, absolutely.
Solution, I'm just saying, we.
I get dollar signs next to everything. Yep, Paul and Kevin, anything with Rich?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, it does seem that, I was gonna say, the theme does seem to be, um, that I'm getting overall is, is that the advisory would generally be supportive. Um, of using the upstairs either way, as long as the costs, and I do see this theme coming up.
Right.
Various, and I wanna, I wanna see how it's addressed in other speakers tonight, but it, it does strike me that. Costs are something we may, when we do look at this again, is something that I'm hearing, we need to take a really major look at, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't think that there's any question that, that, you know, that was one of the factors, I think a lot of people see it as one of the. Causes for the, the, you know, the defeat of the previous plan, um, you know, we had a, we had a talk about the balance between, you know, providing services. And raising taxes essentially, um, that, you know, that's a balance that needs to be struck, and where, where's that balance? You know, my personal takeaway was that the twelve point five million people, I was in favor of it, but. You know, the, the, the residents, not enough residents were, so I, I think that's the first place, the first thing to look at, um, so.
Helene, do you wanna come up and make a comment?
Um, well, yeah, yeah.
Could I just make a, could I just make a, just a personal comment?
Sure.
Um. Um. Re- regarding my friend Wayne Sawchuk's plan, um.
Mm-hmm.
I think it is absolutely critical that the town, that the historic town hall remain the property of the town and the residents. I think for us to give up control of the historic building would be an abdication of our civic responsibility, and because it's been neglected for decades. We are responsible for that neglect, I think doesn't resolve us of that responsibility to, to fix it. Um, it can be fixed, it's a, it's a critical part of the town's character, I think, so.
Right, Helene, if you wanna say something in relation to him, um, uh, uh, his comments and advisory otherwise, I.
Okay, yeah. I just wanna support especially the last thing that he said, um, myself, uh, Rick, and a couple other members of the advisory. Are really firm on the part that this is an historical building, and. Option three, uh, option one was ex, you know, we were, uh, a number of us, I don't know the best word, or I mean adjective to express our horror at option one. But it wasn't a very pleasant feeling, so we were, we, uh, you know, and it was pretty much, uh, a number of us there.
Okay.
Uh, so I think that's, was pretty, pretty obvious, and the reason being is because, um, like we've talked about. Uh, it's the heart and soul of, of the town, um. Cohasset without our historical town hall, and if it was, you know, s- somebody just wrecked it and put in something that was more energy efficient and things like that, it wouldn't be Cohasset. I've been living in Cohasset for over forty years, I'm here because of its history, Eddie and I settled here because of its history. It, it, it's a, the cornerstone, it should be more the soul of the town, it should be more accessible, and that, we talked about that in advisory. That, yes, we do the blood drive there, yes, we do the theater there, yes, we do other things there, we should be upping its civic use. Not, um, not lowering it, and it also, we are a historical town, we just got done with our four hundred celebration of, you know, the, the landing. And so many other things, uh, to make this town vanilla, it, it just doesn't make sense, uh, and in my forty years of talking to people. Uh, it, that's, it's just the heart and soul of the town, and I think that came out loud and clear with the majority of the advisory, not everybody, but the majority.
Right.
Okay, so that's it.
Who would like to speak next? Come on up.
Glenn Pratt, Main Street.
Thanks, Glenn.
I too think that the old building being used for cultural, um, is the way to go. I think that we may be, um, getting a little too far into the weeds here ahead of ourselves. Worrying about, uh, you know, what, when the offices will move out and how the handicap grant will be and where the money will come from for the shingles. I think we have to decide, is this the right thing to do? Does it have enough merit to charge a committee to, to, to take a look at it? I always felt that the idea didn't get a full vetting, um, before the last proposal came to town meeting, maybe it was just because of timing and stuff like that, but I think. I, I wouldn't be surprised if what we're looking at from today until ribbon cutting, or whatever's done, it's a five years from now. You know, um, it's a, it's a project that has a lot of moving parts, it's complicated to do. But I believe we need to get a group looking at it right now, say, you know, how can this work? How will it work? Worrying about when the offices will move out doesn't matter because the nonprofit and however the organization and the lease terms and all that gets written is gonna take a lot of time anyway. And it'll have to be in conjunction with what's going on as a whole, so I think, um, if, if you can decide on the idea. Uh, and a group looks at it, and starting to super to your point, I, I believe that the nonprofit, um, they're, they, they would be responsible. For everything to do with the private, the money, the plans, of course with council provision, but everything would be outside of, outside of government, so you don't have to worry about that. What's running on a parallel track would be a committee trying to figure out what's, what's the solution for the office buildings. So I think, um, you know, um, uh, it's, it's a long process, we need someone to look at it very closely. I do not think for a minute it's beyond the horsepower and the ability of some of the nonprofits in this town to put together, you know, we have. Uh, a lot of very, um, uh, old, wealthy, talented nonprofits in this town, uh, you can, you can look around everywhere, you know, from the. From the drama club and the music circus and community center to the out center, to the light keepers, to the social service league, you know, um, and, uh, so. Let, let's, let's somebody try to put that together, uh, I think if you, if, if we try to have it all together. Prior to the next town meeting and come in with another proposal that may be a little bit too early for, it'd be a little unsettling for people, cause they say, jeez, you know, you know, I've been looking at this new idea for a short time, so. So to me, it's, um, nonprofit, they lease the property under whatever the terms are, never of course sell it, it's always town property, um. And build it up from there, and then whatever they do in the building, subject to the terms of the lease, and, and there's probably an operating committee between town people and the nonprofit and, uh. As I guess it goes forward, you know, and maybe the committee decides, and the right thing to do is that, yeah, you know, the, the community taxpayers pitch in something like, you know, tightening up the shell. And then you go from there, you know, there's all things that I think can be talked through and didn't work out, but I'm not so sure we can get it done in the next six months.
Well, we won't, you don't need to worry about that right now, but.
Well, I, I, um, it, it, step back for a second, the, first of all, I agree with you that, uh. The desire to be all wrapped up in a bow is gonna butt up. Pretty hard against the, the practicalities of getting it done at a specific timeframe, nonetheless, we have things that need to be addressed, um. You know, I think if you just go outside and eyeball the place, you can see that it doesn't reflect all that well on the town as a whole, and of course, the more it. The more it, uh, crumbles either on the exterior or the, the wiring ages on the interior, et cetera, uh, the deeper the, the, the project gets. So there's one piece of it, which I think you're talking about with respect to timeframe, is putting, you know, putting the organizational structure and the plan together, and that will take time. But then there's the other and, and somewhat practical elements that at least say stabilize what's there, and it's not just the historic building, but that's what the conversation is tonight. So from that perspective. What do you suggest is a reasonable action plan if we recognize that it's probably several years, maybe. Two to four years before we actually have a, um, a fleshed out use structure? What's the action plan for shoring up the structure so that it doesn't simply get worse?
I think that the, um. I think that you all do it, um, makes a decision that we're going to, uh, make some, these repairs that are so desperately needed right now. And you get the advice, which you may already have, but what needs to be done, we're already looking at the roof, somebody can tell you what's the situation with the outside.
Could you just speak up a little bit, I'm sorry, it's hard to, we're behind you, Glenn, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yeah, somebody can, somebody can tell you what's the situation with the outside tightening up, so I think you, you perhaps need to have a group studying this idea of a cultural. And then you have to move on with your plans of fixing the building like we did last night, we're gonna start with the roof and get some of that studies done, so.
So one.
I think these things are happening anyway, because the, the fixing up of the roof is.
Let, let me stop you just for a second, just so I'm clear, so you're thinking that you, on, there's a, there's a. An action plan for the structure that could, what, go in phases?
Probably.
Okay, and then there's an action plan for operation, which is, has its, has a life that's defined by how long it takes to put it together?
Right.
That sound about right?
Right, but we need, but we need first to. You could say, you know, this is a darn good idea, we're gonna put a group together to study this whole thing right now, and we may find out very quickly that. We can't put this nonprofit organization together, I doubt it, but that may come back in the beginning, so you may have a, exploring the cultural idea. You know, working on the fixes, and then a third group still has to decide what's gonna happen with the general offices, you know, you still haven't solved your office problem, you know, but I. I just feel that the community as a whole would embrace that old building being set aside as a cultural center. And it has no or little i- influence on anybody's taxes, it's not costing the town any money, and the nonprofits take it. And I don't know about other towns, cause I've only been in this one my whole life, okay, but the nonprofits in this town, I'm telling you, it, it, they're the best. There's, you know, I don't know if it's like that in every town or not, but you, you, you can't, you can't cut them short on what they can do, and so we should really look at it, I think.
I think the one thing last year, you know, with, with the project, which was kinda theoretically, although we were, the town was gonna do the renovations. But there was this idea that we would leave that building, the Old Town Hall, uh, free for build out and eventual. I mean, the one missing ingredient in selling that ultimately, and again, it passed it at town meeting, but I had some reluctance, like we didn't do a feasibility study, are there, are there rea-. Is there really the capacity to go in there and manage that building o- outside of municipal? You know, so that, that, I, you know, I, I, I agree that that is the one study, you know, you keep saying a group that needs to come in, that, that is the one. Piece that we didn't go in, you know, we, we didn't go there, we didn't do our due diligence on that, I mean, I think, I, all the design options and the architectural options, we have ten plus years of. Data and information that we can eventually cull from, but it's, it's that piece, is there really. An entity, and what does that entity look like, and how much money could they bring to bear to Old Town Hall?
That's what the, that's what the group has to determine.
That's the missing thing, yep.
You know, um, everybody has their own opinions on this particular project, but one of the most complicated things that the town has done in the last ten years. Is the senior center project, you know, we had to, we had to swap land between departments, we had to get the attorney general to sign off, we had to get two special pieces of legislation. Because it was a certain type of land, we had to get land agreements with a, another owner, we had to get the, we had to get the sewage map changed. We, you know, on and on and on and on and on, and, you know, it took almost ten years to get it done, but a lot of people would say now, yeah, it was worth it for what we ended up with, so. This is probably, this is gonna be complicated, but it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a showstopper, I don't think.
Yep, so.
Well, at least the building's already there.
Yeah, yeah, um, I, 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 I'm not doing a great job keeping us moving along, but, um, selectmen comments with Glenn, or do you wanna hear from somebody else? Any other comments?
Um. So, um, just to sort of, would you, you'd still see voting in public going on in the building?
Absolutely, of course.
That would be accommodated in this idea of essentially it being all civic, um.
Right, you know, at the, but, but at the light keepers right now, almost any, uh, town department or any organization in town uses it. For free, you know, on this guy, you're only use it, it's open, so it would be the same kind of thing there.
So, how, how would you, in your vision, cause it does seem as though, um, as you said in your opening remarks, that this is in a way similar to the light keepers, only in. Different form, using the same model and bringing over there, how would you, in that vision, address the concern of those that, that feel. Uh, viscerally, uh, that the town hall should, because of its historic nature and the three hundred years that we've been here and been there. Should be in the control of the town government and therefore the people. Your idea sort of does rub up against that, and I'm just wondering how do you, how do you, how would you address that, because I think the concern of those folks. Is gonna have to be taken into serious consideration.
I think it probably is the terms of the lease.
So through, through the leasing terms, build in the control of, that would reflect those who wanna see it historically controlled, as a historic building by the town.
Probably. Yeah, and probably some sort of an operating committee so that clashes can be resolved, and somebody has a referee shirt on, you know, um, that, that could make people feel comfortable.
I, I just, to reflect back on, on your question. I, about three times a week I walk past Old City Hall in Boston. There apparently wasn't a whole lot of emotion surrounding it, that's now a little strong, a few other things. We have, um, we have an agreement which you know of because you were part of, uh, hammering it out with the, the senior center. Now, while the town currently owns the senior center, in recognition of the extraordinary work put together by its, its early proponents. There are accommodations, if you will, cutouts for that, um, while the town owns the building and is not in any way obligated to, uh, restrict its use. We have agreed that no matter what, the first use, the first call on the use of that building is senior activities, right? But at the same time, it hasn't withheld us from scheduling, uh, selectmen's meetings there, uh, scheduling other committee meetings there as is necessary, holding public events and so forth. So, actually working through that worries me less, so long as it's clearly one of our objectives, that the, the town doesn't wanna give up ownership of the structure. And it doesn't wanna give up primary access when necessary, and. You know, because you do write leases for a living, that it's plausible to construct that language so that it works for everybody, so.
I, I think that Chris would probably know better on this, but to give up ownership, it probably requires going out the public bid, which would blow the whole idea, so.
Thank you very much, um, I wanna keep us moving, any other selectman comments? Okay, who would like to speak next?
Glenn, can I make one clarification?
Sure.
We, the, the discussion about leasing the Old Town Hall or transferring ownership was not part of the discussion, it wasn't in, in the questions.
Right.
We, we didn't discuss it at all, and I, I think we, there would probably be, um, we, we would probably have very strong recommendations about that.
And, and it's right.
We're, I don't think we're proposing, um, it, it, uh, when you talk about a, a, a lease structure. Is to protect the town and any other entity that would be programmed for use, really where this comes back, and this was what Diane was talking about earlier. Is that there's, you know, we, in going to town meeting last year, talked a lot about a building and very little about how to program. talked a lot about a building and very little about how to program that building, if it was going to be for civic and cultural use. Then much of the discussion that's arisen here tonight has been about that programming. That programming would require some sort of operating agreement for access to the property and so on, and typically that falls under lease.
And, and that's the intention, I think, of, of tonight's input, specifically to programmatic uses for Old Town Hall. Because we wanna try to, when we set forth what our next steps are, what are we gonna do? Whatever our objective is, then we'll worry about, you know, we'll worry about the details. We'll probably have to, if, if we went in the direction where it was gonna solely be for civic and cultural uses, that would be different than if we decided, you know, we were gonna use it for municipal offices. We, we need that big framework to solidify soon, so that we can make some next steps.
Just to be clear, when we talked about the civic and cultural uses, you know, the way it is now with the dramatic club use of it, and that's the thing people were anticipating.
Right. Yep. Yep.
There was never any discussion about leasing out or giving up control or anything like that.
Financing and, right. Yep.
And I, I think you would, there would be a lot of very strong pushback on that idea.
Great. Fran, did you wanna be next? You can come on up.
Just to add on to what you just said, uh, Francis Collins, four oh four South Main Street. Uh, with the proposal that was put forth to the town at last year's Springs Town Meeting, one of the main considerations of the Old Town Hall was to rehab the building, bring it up to date, up to code, bring it up to heating and ventilation and air conditioning and electrical and plumbing supplies, et cetera, bring it up to two thousand and eighteen at least. And the proposal for the second floor was to gut the second floor and put some petitions in, temporary petitions, in anticipation of whatever use was decided in the future that we would put it to. And there was a lot of discussion about five oh one C, co, the, the basic nonprofits that we've been talking about here tonight. So that all was discussed, and we just, and, and the, and the decision or the thrust of the, of the meeting was, with us and the architects, was that we would just sort of rough that, rough everything in up on the second floor and decide what are we gonna do with it? Are we gonna make municipal offices? Are we gonna invite various nonprofits come in to use it?
Right.
And the, the auditorium was to be brought up to date with, with proper bathrooms, proper accesses, proper, um, lighting, sound, whatever. And as we talked about the other night, you know, that the projection room is still left, I mean, we could show movies here, we could have lectures there. When I was a kid, we used to have dancing lessons here a couple of weeks, a couple of nights a week. You know, there were, we, just this past weekend, we had the, uh, the, uh, churches on the common Christmas sale, that was taken up by the space. And, and the voting, so there are a lot of uses that that hall could be put to now that currently are not being used. Basically, it's, it's, it's the dramatic club in the summer, a couple of times a year, and elections. So it could, there, there are a lot of uses that that could be, and it could be a revenue producer. Now, who owns it and who directs it and who, who organizes it? I don't know.
Right.
Do we wanna have, do we wanna have the overall oversight of the whole building? I think we should. Or do we wanna give it to somebody else and hope they do the right thing?
Right.
I don't know.
Well, and, you know, I, again, the, the, the questions that were presented, and I, I know we just naturally have to discuss other things, but, I mean, we, we kinda have to decide whether we wanna do something similar to what we did before, because the decision to not use the second floor of Old Town Hall to just rough it out, and the decision, which was suggestion number one, which is to cram as much in that building as we can for municipal purposes, drives necessarily the cost of the secondary building or the new Town Hall or the annex or whatever you wanna talk about. So, I mean, that, this is something we have to get our heads around, you know, and I, I agree that a lot of the decisions, I mean, in order to go to town meeting, we have to have answers for these questions.
Which is why we're here.
Right. But, um.
The other aspect of it, how much, how much office space do we need? Now, there was some discussion, um, in the last year or so about we should have an open office arrangement here. Everything's open, we have so, so little competitions and whatnot. And I think that's like going to the doctor and telling them that maybe you have an STD, but you gotta tell the whole people in the waiting room that what the story is. Not just a draw, it's a silly conclusion.
That's for Collins.
But we don't wanna, I mean, you wanna go and you wanna talk to the.
I'm just trying to make the link.
This is what happens when meetings go on too long, I'm just telling you.
We don't wanna what?
Is that a comment on the bathrooms and the, uh?
Now, you know, we, if, if you wanna talk to the assessors about your assessing problem, you wanna talk to the, to the selectman about your, you don't wanna tell the whole world what your problem is. Maybe it's nobody else's business, so. The idea is, we have, have, we have to provide enough space for people to conduct their business in a reasonably private manner. In areas where we have public meetings like here, then we need bigger spaces.
Right, and I mean, one of the driving, um, issues from the get-go was more meeting space and more comfortable meeting space, so that when, you know, and there are overflow evenings in this very room where people are sitting at, at Tracy and Jen's desks, and so there was a lot of that. And I think we worked through a, a lot of that, and again, like, what's in the walls is, right now, we gotta figure out what the walls are gonna look like.
Well, I think the thrust of this, of this meeting and, and, and the whole thing for the last couple of years has been, we wanna use as much of the Old Town Hall for civic, civic purposes as we possibly, cultural and civic purposes as we possibly can. Consistent with, be sure that we have enough space to conduct the town's business in a safe and efficient and reliable manner.
Agreed. Okay. Thank you. Any, any comments for Franny?
Uh, no, you, you have a hand.
Okay. Uh, if, if you wanna come up, please come up. I don't wanna, like, have people talking from the audience, I'm sorry, just 'cause it's, it's hard for people at home to see and. It breaks down the.
Hi, Lisa Pratt, um, fifty-one Highland Avenue and.
Barbara Baumgartner, two sixty-four.
So, um, hi.
Hello, good evening.
Happy to be here tonight, thanks for, um, allowing us the opportunity to speak. Um, so we represent Cohasset Dramatic Club, aside from being longtime citizens of Cohasset. Um, I'm the president, Barb's the vice president. Um, we also vacuum clean dust, you know, try to get heat out of the vents and stuff like that. Um, from the perspective of what the question is tonight, I, I, I feel, um, for all of us, we would agree that, um, the history of that space and the history of Cohasset, um, is all interwoven into that being a part of our town. It feels like, it feels like it, it's a part of our town. Um, that's not to say that I think the opportunity to have there be great, um, civic use of it is, uh, certainly out there. But I think, um, from the municipal side, I think that's a decision that needs to be made, that it needs to have some kind of combination space so that it's as, it's, it's put to the best use that we possibly can, so we use every square inch of that space. Um, we do spend a tremendous amount of time there, and we are prob, we are certainly, um, almost a hundred years of Cohasset Dramatic Club living in that building. And twenty twenty-one will be our anniversary. So, so we do live there a lot, it's just probably 'cause it's not nice enough that anyone else wants to be there, and, and that's understandable. Um, the safest place to probably be in that space now is the theatrical electricity, 'cause that's completely up to code, 'cause it had to be, 'cause we had to invest in that. Um, but you're right, you can't read a program sitting in the space and there's a huge hole in the ceiling going on, you know, that stuff falls through from. And, and there's, so there's a lot of things going on there, and we're still lucky to be able to vote in it. And I think, um, I think the opportunity to rehab, rehabilitate the space in, in whatever way we can to make it safe, to make it not be scary, to make it not be really cold in the winter and, um, not really hot in the summer, um, is, is our mission and is our responsibility. Forget about Cohasset Dramatic Club, we would be, we would be one lucky user of that space, but it opens the door to have so much other opportunity for the town and our kids. And, um, we're actually gonna put on, um, four different performances there from January to July of two thousand and nineteen. Three of them are gonna be for young people under the age of twenty-one. So, uh, it's what, it's what is really important and what helps enhance what other art, arts programs we have in our town. And, and we, we think it's really important, we take it really seriously. Um, it's, you know, it's, it's all part of our fabric, and I feel like we can't walk away from it and we need to try and maintain it.
So, and I don't wanna cut you off, but I, I'm really happy you're here, um, and I wish some of the other arts organizations were here, because one thing I would love to understand better, and to Glenn's earlier point, I think ultimately, should we go in a direction where it's gonna be mostly cultural and civic use as the whole building, we would have to do a little more deep dive and study. But you both are very involved in the arts community and cultural community on the south shore. And, and, you know, if, if the building were, you know, renovated in a, in a modern way and had some capabilities, do you see the need in at least the performing community, um, around here for additional venue space? You know, are there other smaller music slash theatrical groups that you think would, would love that space? And your schedule, does that even, I know you're, you're in there seven or eight months a year and.
Yeah, I mean, that kind of ebbs and flows, and sometimes we just, we do things because we feel like, I know that there's nothing going on at the high school, and so I'm trying to fill the void. There's no middle school, um, musical theater activity this year because they did a high school version, so they don't, there's not, there's not a lot of consistency, they do what they can. So, so then we do something to allow the kids to have another outlet that, that's afternoons. Um, but I think we don't look at this as it being anything other than, um, opening up the doors for, um, even just our own Rusty's Givers fan, you know, I mean, things. I think, I think there'd be so much more that would come toward, to us, to, um, from a, from a cultural perspective, if it was a, a, a space that was, um, easily, easy for someone to walk in, um, that idea of the sort of plug and play thing that Wayne was talking about, um, in terms of contemporary, you know, theatrical space. Even when they redid the high school, you can now walk in and, and touch buttons in there and be able to turn on, um, lighting as a user of the space, but not have to be someone who's technically savvy about it. Um, right now, to use, I mean, we can switch, you know, four lights on in the ceiling of the room, but to use any of the theatrical lighting, it does require setting, setting up equipment that is expensive and we couldn't leave out, and we would wanna leave out in the room, um, all the time, just 'cause you don't want it to get, whatever, broken. I mean, there's gonna be little kids, this week, there's, there was recreation programs going on in there. So it does ebb and flow, there's a meeting on Thursday night of, um, Safe Harbor, right? Um, so I think that and voting, and, um, a lot of people may feel that voting shouldn't happen in that space. I feel like it's what we do, you know what I mean? We're, we're not Duxbury as big as they are, we're not a lot of other towns that have, um, huge performing arts spaces. I don't know if we'd have that kind of traffic, but I absolutely believe, um, with a safe, not over the top, but safe, climate-controlled space that just had heating and lighting, um, and AC in the summer would give, um, give the town a space to be able to do lots of things. I mean, lots more meetings would probably be held there, and, um, I think there's so much opportunity.
Yep. Barbara?
Yeah. Um, I think there is a lot of opportunity, and, I mean, right now, we spend probably more time there than the average citizen would be, and, and we feel as if we're caretakers of that space too, even though it's crumbling around us and rain is falling on our heads sometimes. Um, but I just, I wanna say that, um, that historic Town Hall is Cohasset Town Hall. And it's a public building. I own it, she owns it, we all own it. It, in my perspective, it needs to stay owned by the town and managed by the town. Um, creating a nonprofit to come in and, you know, whatever, we fix it up and then we hand it to a nonprofit, or they are involved in fixing it up too, is appalling to me, like Pauline said, you know, just having, converting it to offices. That's kind of appalling to me to, to let that go from our town perspective. As a citizen, I own a piece of that building, we all do. I don't want someone else to take that responsibility.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think the Light Keepers is great, it's a lovely building. I don't feel any pride of ownership, I don't feel, you know, that it's mine. I feel that that's mine, and I'd like it to stay that way.
Right. Any questions from the board?
No, you, you answered my question.
Is there anywhere in your deliberations or thoughts about the second floor? Do you, you, you care both that one way or the other? If under your visions, you, you got what you wanted, uh, if there were officers up there, does it matter to you? Um, does the second floor matter to you?
No, I don't, I don't think it does. I think, um, in all of the plans that, um, four different committees have gone through over the years trying to come up with a really solid way to use that space and potentially this space as well. Um, I don't think w- we had any strong feeling about it. I think we thought we wanted the, the, uh, the building itself to be accessible, the building to feel open, there to be restrooms that worked and, I mean, you know, I think the needs are fairly simple. I know that that's not, and, uh, non, it's, it's still a costly endeavor, but I don't, um, think we have any strong feelings about the upstairs. I think if it could work for the town, that those were then offices and that was beneficial financially, that's the way it should go. Um.
Well, what about, any thoughts in your vision of, um, basement? Would you like to, what would you like to see under your view of things? Or do you care of?
In where, did you say?
The basement. Would you have any thoughts as to anything on that, or does it matter to you in your vision of what we might do with the building?
We use part of the basement for the, the dressing rooms, that, that level or the lower?
The basement, yeah, underneath the.
The low, low level.
Underneath the, we are at, yeah.
Where the cells are, that kind of thing, yeah.
Any thoughts on that, or, and you, or would you care when we?
I mean, not strongly, we know that we, we'd have to, um, you know, we know that if, if there were any restoration to be done, that there's gonna be, it's a multi-use storage space, it's not just ours. Right now, no one would wanna put anything down there, it's, um, it, you know, it's rough. But, uh, for, but aside from that, I, I think, um, I think if there's a way to, uh, obviously in an updated version, there's a climate-controlled space that is the way to make it a safer, um, usable space for, um, important records, if it can be that kind of a space, you know, a, a vaultish type of space or whatever. I, I think it's shared use space, and we would hope to have some small footprint of it. But certainly not the expectation of where it is now, it's just, it is what it is, but that's not hard to make that all go away at all. Um, and in fact, a lot of the, I, I'm sure there's a lot of things that, that would be done if it was done over, but, um, a lot of that lighting that's up there, I mean, that's a, that's investment of ours over the last fifteen years or so, when this board of directors kind of came in and really made it safe and, um, made sure that, that, that lighting was working efficiently and all of the, the, um, the dimmer pack, these big, these big, um, electronic boxes that run the theatrical lighting is all done safely with the right cabling, um, with the right power and stuff. And we've, we've paid to make sure that part of the space is safe or, um, it wouldn't be. So, so there's some of that that may be able to be used again. I mean, that was something that was part of the discussion in the last, with the restoration, was potentially, um, there's a lot of new, brand-new curtains that are all up to code and, um, that are fire retardant and all that sort of thing. So there's a lot of pieces of it that may be able to be worked and reused, utilized to save some money. That's a, a huge expense to do that over for whatever, whoever took it on.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next? Who would like to be recognized, come on up, Ralph. Thank you, everybody, this is very helpful.
Ralph Doris, Sir Walter Atlantic Avenue.
Hey, Ralph.
You'll remember me from the last.
But maybe there's a new viewer at home.
Yeah, right. But anyway. I was saying to myself, I've listened to a lot of people, including you and everybody else here, and I was saying to myself, you know, what do you have to do to make a decision? Um, I think there, there's, there are a few obvious things to me, which may not be obvious to everybody else. But anyway, obviously the roof has to be done, I'd say the sheathing has to be done as well. In other words, you have to strip the sides of that building, and you have to put in something that provides drainage for water and, and protects the building. Fundamentally, without getting into ADA or code, you really need to restore the old building to that degree, as long as it doesn't affect, um, as I say, ADA or code or other requirements at this point. Um, the second thing is, it seems to me the decision tree is really fundamental. Do you want the town to retain, obviously, everyone said it, do you want the town to retain the, the Old Town Hall? Or do you want to have a five oh one C three take it over? So the question is, what kinds of, what, how, what kind of questions are, come out of that? And the question is, what does it mean to have a five oh one C three? And isn't, doesn't that need to be sort of vetted to some degree? So you need a, some, some information by which you can actually make that decision, otherwise, how do you make the decision? Second is, if you in fact wanna make it a, a, a building that the town owns, I think you have to maximize its utility, that's the fundamental need of such a building. If you're gonna really take, put money into that, then you have to actually use it for something, right? And not simply say, I'm gonna take the offices out, I'm gonna, and so on. If it, but the basic thing is, if it's a five oh one C three you go with, then you're driven to actually building an entirely new building for town offices. That seems obvious to me, you certainly wouldn't keep the annex, you wouldn't keep them connected, there's no reason to do that. So, you know, as you could, you gotta run through a decision tree on this thing that says, five oh one C three, town use, if five oh one C three, don't you need more information? If town use, what does it drive you to? And that's all I would say, I mean, I don't have to flesh it out and all, but that's kind of where I come from. And the very first thing is, make sure you keep this thing in such shape that you can. And the very first thing is, make sure you keep this thing in such shape that you can make that decision five years from now or three years from now. If you don't do that, then what are you gonna do? You have to do the basics, so that's all I have to say, so.
That's why we're here, thank you.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thanks, Ralph.
Who else? I see a few people that haven't spoken, maybe you don't want to? Um, nobody else tonight?
Nope.
Susan Franklin, one forty-two Lambert's Lane.
That's Susan.
How's everybody?
Yes, ma'am, Susan.
Hi.
Okay, so um, this is an interesting conversation. Uh I think way back when, really early on, it's something I was, I was sort of pushing the whole five oh one three C uh idea. And um it just turned out that it it came out too expensive to keep the old town hall building for that single purpose.
Could you speak up, please?
So I'm kind of leaning towards the uh support, the community civic aspect in the first floor of the building or the second floor, I don't care which one you decide to pick, um the auditorium used to be on the second floor. If you really wanted to restore it back to original, original, the auditorium's on the second floor.
Right, been there, done that.
Um.
That was study number two.
But I agree with Ralph that uh, you know, if the town's gonna own the building and we're gonna put the time and effort and the focus into really restoring it, which I honestly would prefer we do it uh in one fell swoop and not a little bit at a time, 'cause a little bit at a time, you end up spending more in the long run than if you really sit back, do your homework, come up with a plan, work a plan and deliver on your plan. Um and in that plan, I would see the town uh taking some portion of the building for town use. Um likely on the second floor and certainly do auditorium for meetings um or other town functions. Uh but of course, I can't really come to a conclusion on how that all works, because being sort of the type A personality I am, uh I wonder, well, what what's, where's the rest of the town uh offices going to be?
We need all the answers.
Um so I lean a little bit to Ralph's uh comment about decision tree. I don't know how we can decide on one path when we don't really, haven't really figured out what we're doing on the other path, so. So to me, it's like start at point A, figure out what we need to solve the whole problem, not just one single problem, and then come up with a plan uh that fits that problem.
Yep.
Um and I understand the emotional aspect and and I agree with a lot of people in this room that we should support. I, my kids are in the classic drama dramatic club, they're in lots of plays, I still have them on CD, we watch them every once in a while, we have a lot of laughs.
You do?
Yeah.
Yeah, I said, mom.
Yeah, um so I'm all for that, um but I just really think if we don't have a decision tree, have a plan that's solid and really well thought out and we have uh and we're solving all the problems that we know we need to solve, if you go back to to the town and ask again with our full uh, you know, answer,
Mm-hmm.
sensible answer, it's not gonna work out.
I th- I think um, you know, one, like, little infusion of good news is, we have a lot of information already. There's, there are pieces we don't have, but we have, we have a lot. We have a number of plans, for better, for worse, that, so we're not completely starting from scratch and I I agree. And I think all of us, I I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but Steve says it all the time, I mean, the problem is, what is that decision tree, you know, and it kind of was in, out of balance um for better, for worse. And I I think that, if nothing else, that hurt us the most in the long run. So that's what we're really trying to do, because that, the Old Town Hall and the discussion tonight is really because what we decide with that and the values that we bring to that decision impacts everything. And then, once we have that uh that kind of first decision, what is it? You know, what are, what are we doing globally? Then we can use what we already have and try to get us marching forward as as best we can to address the needs that we know we have. I mean, I think those are well-articulated, you know, there's always a debate, but um I'm optimistic that um, you know, we can, we can move this forward, right, again, I don't know what the timeline is and and that, and Steve said it all the time last year, you know, is there, are you putting up a phony timeline? You know, we gotta do the right thing by making the right decisions in the right order. And I I think we're all committed to doing that. Steve?
Knowing that we're getting close to the closing hour.
Yep. Yeah.
Um, excuse me, I just, I wanted to summarize what I've heard tonight and uh encourage the board to kick in those areas where I've missed it. Um feedback has been uh been a a very consistent that there is tremendous support for use of the historic building for civic and cultural use. Um there's a an additional amount of feedback that uh resists the idea of transferring ownership of the building. And if um if we, the board, has suggested that in the past, I don't, I I I think we need to clarify what we have meant by transferring the use of the building. I don't think there was ever an intention of the town, or I'm sorry, of the board, to give up ownership of of the of the construction. I'm sorry, of the constructed building. Um there's a a a third piece, uh both Jack and Diane identified that uh, you know, the subject of cost continues to arise. And of course, that's a big one for us as well. And uh Ralph and Susan actually came back around to the, if you will, the all enveloping um consideration that we need to make as purveyors of town's real estate, which is, what's the highest and best use? What's the highest and best use of that building? Because ultimately, starting out on the path that brings us through a decision tree, that's the guiding principle. And um the, I I believe that the the point of the discussion at this juncture was to clarify for us what was important to uh community leaders, uh what was important to the community broadly and those constituents who are currently using the facility on a regular basis. So that it helps us to define objectives that we can state coherently to guide us for all of that. Oh, that sounds great. We still gotta repair the place before it falls down. Um so there, no matter what, although we may have long-term plans, and Susan, God knows, I appreciate your point about either swallowing it whole or doing it, I hate to say this, but expedience probably will push us into at least having to make um some, some base repairs before we get to a final plan. Otherwise, that the price tag is going to grow exponentially, because it will be some period of time before we can go to the town with a uh encompassing program. And I.
Not, not to interrupt you, but my, my point was more to some of the uh comments that were made about having uh the nonprofits come in and and.
Yeah.
I see. Then, uh.
I see it more as you, if if you build it, they will come concept, you know, like if we fix it up,
Will do the renovation.
if the town fixes up their building, then you you'd be able to attract uh the the nonprofit um aspect into that building. But to put the onus on the nonprofit to actually make those types of repairs, um I think is.
Thanks for the clarification.
Not practical.
I I there's, I, but all of this brings, brings back the point that we've, we have an awful lot to, an awful lot of feedback to use now and to and to bring to bear when we define what it is we're going to bring back to town meetings, a statement of objectives, and then to build a plan around around that as well.
Thanks, Steve. Jack, anyone?
Let's go with those guys for.
Those guys first?
Uh, can you give a view, um Susan, the, what, Michael, please, um. Um, th- th- the idea of civic control versus governmental control, I mean, if you picked up on that theme, where would, in your vision, or view of where this would go, where does that balance out? Um, you know, would you be against governmental control or against civic control? Or would you prefer to see one or the other, or, or do you not care? Who controls what goes on in there?
So you're talking about once the building is is renovated and then occupied for use?
Right, and uh, uh yeah, who essentially is gonna be the, the control of what goes on in there?
Yeah, well, well, I, I think that the government would would be the, you know, controlling party, but obviously would not be involved in the operating aspects of the entities or using the building. So they would have oversight over whatever organization would be managing the first floor, whatever that civic space is, if he rules and, you know.
Right, sort of what we do today.
But they wouldn't be like filling out, you know, the uh the playlist or the shows that are gonna, you know, go on, you know.
Oh, I'd love to have input on that.
So in in your thinking, in your view, uh the idea of protecting the historicity, the historical nature, you know, and this isn't a financial question, this is that visceral feeling that I suspect exists within a large significant body or a, you know, a good body of people. Um is that a, is that, would that be a really significant factor that we would, we would need to make sure we've addressed before we propose anything? And that is the, the his, the people's, or some segment of people's sensitivity to the fact that this is an historic building, it's government-controlled, it's like this, Miss Longgotten has said earlier, this is our building type feeling, you know, that. I'm just saying to you, in your view, you know, how much weight do you think we should give that? Is it very significant or controlling or not controlling and?
Yeah. No, I think the town should control the building and control, yeah.
And be sensitive.
And again, if we wanna, if we have to rent that space to other users and like any, any rental relationship, it would be.
But if we did anything that breached into the historical nature of the building, say, you know, putting a seven eleven in there would certainly breach the historical nature of the building. I mean, would that be a tripwire for you? Would that be say, hey, you know, I don't care what the costs are, I don't wanna see the stars?
If you want to pay the dollars and need it, I'm like.
And I know you wouldn't want a seven eleven, but, but is that?
Maybe got a show.
Is that idea, is that idea a way you want in your mind?
Yes, of course, that's why the town should stay involved, because the town would be controlling who would be have, you know, who would have access to the building.
Okay.
Um yeah, so from what you see, the most efficient use of the building involves town offices up top, downstairs, there's gonna be an auditorium fitted out, only by the town rented to anyone who wishes to use it that is a nonprofit or otherwise. Um and then try to make the cost as efficiently as useful as possible for renovation with an immediate structure to hold the roof from falling and destruction as far as what we're seeing now.
Right.
Does that sound about right?
Yes, and if you use the second floor for some municipal offices, obviously, will impact what we would need to build for the, you know, examens of the municipal space.
Thank you.
That's it.
So um we, unless somebody has something else for Susan, I wanna try to wrap up. I know John came in late, do you wanna make any comments? If so, I'm gonna ask you to come up and do it formally.
Thank you, Susan.
I made everybody else do it, thanks, Susan.
Yeah. I understand Rich and Pauline sort of summarized our discussion. I guess, just following up on little bits I've heard in terms of the the three options. As I think I said, there is very little interest in the all civic use option. It's not clear from this discussion whether that's what you were talking about, when you talked about some other entity getting control. All I need to, sort of add to that in terms of my view, is that the finances of that, given the funding streams available for that building, CPC in particular, um if that option were to be seriously discussed, um my supposition would be, somebody could prove me wrong, that that would be a much more expensive option, because we basically be taking existing town asset for which we have available funds other than, basically available funds um for renovation, which would not be applicable to replacement space. So it makes the total sort of tax increment cost much more, I think, if we go with that option. So that, that that additional use would would need to justify that.
Yeah.
And if it's the highest and best use, you'd have to be a way to get the funding stream out of that, which would offset that cost.
Right, we did discuss that a little bit earlier, just in terms of, you know, how, how, the funding sources that exist, that are available, not necessarily we'll get, including CPCs, so. Um, yeah, Rich and Pauline did a good job. Anything else for you personally here? Anybody? Okay. All right. Um.
I would just make an observation.
Yep.
Brian Host, twenty-nine Heather Drive, and and this is just an observation as opposed to a personal opinion on which direction this project should go. It's come to me as I sit here tonight, that the fact that there's even a discussion around item number one, that there are some people in our town that have made it a discussion, is really a manifestation of the fact that there is no programming plan. Um and I think those people that have that view and and would support option one have simply kind of given up on the idea that we can really, truly, fully program and utilize this space. And I think they could probably be pretty easily convinced otherwise. Um but it's gonna require someone or some group of people to actually do the work, to develop the plan and put it out there. And so I would just observe that there are sort of two paths forward with this group of folks that like to talk about option one. One is to just simply say they're a small minority and we're gonna ignore them and the chatter. Um the other is to actually step up and somehow do the programming plan. And perhaps what we need going forward, and I just throw this out there as an idea for discussion, not tonight, but in the future, perhaps what we really need instead of um one committee is actually two. One committee of folks that know how to build things and one committee of folks that actually know how to program things. Um and get both jobs done that way, um as opposed to having the two roles commingled in some way and one being focused on and one perhaps not getting as much attention when, when it comes down to crunch time, which appears what happened in the last go-round. Um it it it's clear from the the room tonight, there's a lot of emotion and strong feeling that the best and highest use is a civic space. And I I will offer my personal opinion on this one, I I agree with that, provided that it's actually programmed and thoroughly utilized. And I think that um we would be remiss to ignore the fact that many of the historical uses of that space um are now taking place elsewhere, right? I mean, there was, there was a time where, that was where we held town meeting, that's why it was originally built. We now do that at the high school. That's where the high school and the middle school and the elementary school place took place, because that's where they took place. It was the only one in town. That was once upon a time where the South Shore Playhouse, the South Shore Playhouse Associates had their functions. They now have other venues. So just building it is is not enough. This has to be programmed, it has to be thoughtfully programmed, it has to be proactively programmed. Um and I I would just put that out there, that's how you get this group of folks who just say, I give up, I'm tired of talking about this, let's just build off the spaces at the lowest possible cost, 'cause that's our obligation as a town, and be done with this. That's how you get them into the fold to support funding that civic space. It's a multimillion dollar space. And I think that it's really important that we have a real plan that justifies that type of spend. Otherwise, you know, people look at what's taking place in there and say, well, we can vote in the high school, right? It probably felt like sacrilege when we moved our first town meeting out of that space and up into the high school, but now that's just what we do. Some people probably feel that voting would just take the same path. Um so I just, I put that out there.
Right. Good comments, thank you.
Thank you. Can I just follow up on that?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, I had a question too, thing.
Oh.
Sure, I'm sorry.
Whatever, I don't, I don't care, whatever you want.
Right, okay, do you wanna wait till Rich makes a comment in there?
No problem. It's quick, just very quick. Um THRAC did collect a good amount of data and talk to a lot of people. There is information on how many days that was used, what it was used for. I don't, I don't recall it, because it was in one of the dozens of meetings we went to. Uh but they did talk about that and other possible interested parties, including the high school.
So, yeah, and thank you, I I'm, I'm hunting and gathering and I encourage anybody else to do so. If there, some of the documents that have been produced over the past ten years that that are relevant to use discussions, um I wanna make sure that the selectmen have them available in our packets for next week. Um and I have other things that um Mary McGoldrick, who is the chair of the town hall renovation last iteration, um sent me, she couldn't, she couldn't be here, obviously.
And a qu- a quick side to that, I would be willing to be involved in a task force that just did what we were talking about here. And that is a task force designed to deal with the programming aspect. We had to do that to prove the usage for the senior son.
Mm-hmm.
And I was involved in that, um with especially with the person who did so much work.
We will discuss that next week.
Anyway, so I I would, you know, be involved in that, if you wanted me to.
Thanks. Thank you.
One other comment, if I may. Um the, the other piece to just. One other comment, if I may, um, the, the other piece to justify the investment in that, in that space is obviously the grant funding that's, that's available, which also requires a programming plan, so the two come hand in hand, not only will a plan allow you to sell this much more effectively and perhaps convince some of these folks that are just giving up on the idea, but it would also reduce the net price. Um, and it's one thing to talk about grants, it's another thing to actually build a plan, file for the grant, get the grant based on the merit of the plan, and reduce the asked price to the taxpayer.
So, can I ask, did we submit a, a grant proposal for that space last year?
Yes. We did, and, and we.
Could we get a copy of that, so we could read it?
And we got very good feedback, specifically to the cultural facilities fund from the Mass Cultural Council, we got very good feedback on some of the things that would better enhance, um, the grant go-around, and it's rare to get.
A pro- a programming plan.
A programming plan is what they were asking for, and, you know, and, and so, yes.
So they talked about getting a yes.
They did, indeed.
Well, can I get that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have it.
Yeah, I asked Tracy to put a folder together for stuff for next week, all right, I would love to wrap this discussion, yeah, Kevin, just to Brian.
So, uh, would it, if we did a study, thorough study on all the program opportunities there, would it matter to you in the end if, um, when the program's, is all done, whether the government ran the, that programming, or, or civic organization or organizations, does it, does it matter to you in your analysis or your view?
It, it, it doesn't, what matters to me is that it gets done effectively.
So that wouldn't matter to you, whether it's governmental or not?
No, I mean, if, 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 if our government has the people and the resources and the passion to program that space, that's great, if they don't, then we should, I think, take a, a, a mindful self-inventory of that reality and hand it to somebody who does. Um, I, I, I just think that we need to be honest with ourselves about whether or not, you know, the government is gonna do this, and if, and if we are, great, but if we're not
You would, you would object.
If, if we're not, then we absolutely need somebody who will.
Okay.
Okay.
Answers one question.
All right, thank you, everybody, this was very helpful, very informative, all of the above.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, stay tuned, more to come, um, comments from the selectmen?
Go ahead. No, I, I, it's very informative, I did a little. It was a, it was a lot of it, great, um, especially.
And, and I didn't intend us to talk too, too, you know, much tonight, so, processes, and see if we can hear them there, and come back next week, then we'll get through what we can.